Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Petaluma City Council and Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, January 8th. May we have a roll call for the evening?
Barnacle.
Present.
Kater Thompson.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Now absent. Posekay.
Here.
Shribz.
Here.
And McDonald.
Here. And now our first item of the evening will be for closed session, and I'd like to ask the city attorney to both note council member Now's recusal and also the content of the evening.
I'll be happy to do both. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council member Now is recused because Happy Hearts Preschool is where she formerly worked as a source of income for her. And with respect to the closed session, that's regarding conference with real property negotiators under Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is the city-owned fairgrounds property, APN 007031004, and that's the 175 Fairgrounds Drive parcel, and also APN 007031005, and that's the 866 East Washington parcel. The city's negotiator is Peggy Flynn, city manager. The negotiating party is the Fourth District Agricultural Association under negotiation or price and terms of payment and other terms of use of portions of the city-owned fairgrounds property for presentation of the Sonoma Marin Fair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. Now, on all items on our agenda, the public is invited to make comments on the closed session item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, and we typically do it by a card at the back of the room, and I'm looking to see if we have any speakers wishing to come to the front. I may ask, do we have any online postings for this item coming to the clerk before the meeting?
No public comment was received.
And not seeing anyone in the audience, I think we're going to close public comment. And with that, the council will now adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much. We will return at 6:30 or at the conclusion of the closed session.
Mayor, whenever you're ready.
We are ready. So let's start.
We're started? Yes. We've started the webinar already.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Petaluma City Council and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, January 8th. If you wish to provide public comment on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker card in the back of the chamber and bring it to our city clerk over here. I know more cards have been just delivered back there, so hopefully we'll keep receiving them before we start public comment. I would now like to invite Monica Aparicio and Maria Galvez to provide information for those who want to participate in Spanish.
Yes, good evening and wishing you all a happy new year. My name is Maria Galvez and I'm here with my partner of interpretation, Monica Aparicio. We're here as interpreters. Today, this event will take place in Spanish and English. We'll use both languages actively, so you can choose your language to participate in your preferred language after we've explained how to use the interpreter. We're using the function of the interpreter, Zoom. After we've finished explaining, the function of the interpreter will activate. If you're connected to your computer, you'll see an icon of a world in the lower part of your screen. If you're connected to your tablet or phone, press the plus key and you'll see a menu that includes the option of interpreting languages. To listen, press the icon of the world or the option of interpreting languages. At the following, select your language. Thank you.
And thank you, too. I'd like to invite our city clerk to take our council roll call for the evening.
Barnacle.
Present.
Kater Thompson.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Posekay.
Here.
Shribz.
Here.
And McDonald.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you very much. Let's now stand and say the pledge of allegiance. And a moment of silence. Thank you. And now I'd like to look up and down the dials and see if any council member has a desire to modify the agenda, any deletions. Seeing none, we'll move on with tonight's regular agenda as posted. And at this point, I'd like to invite the city attorney to announce any reportable actions from our recent closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no action tonight that the Brown Act requires be reported, but the council has nonetheless asked me to share the following with community regarding the topic of the real property negotiations closed session tonight, and that's the following. The council for the agricultural associations, including the Fourth District Agricultural Association, requested on December 28th of last year that the city postponed by 15 calendar days the deadline for the association to sign the license agreement that the city council approved to permit the association to continue to offer the fair, and that requested extension would be until Friday, January 12th. And otherwise, of course, as I believe most are aware, the lease of the city's fairgrounds property to the Fourth District Agricultural Association expired at the end of December 2023. The council has approved an interim agreement that staff provided last week to the association to grant that extension through the 12th. The city council looks forward to receiving the signed license that they have approved and offered to the association by that time, by the 12th. But would like us to note that in the absence of receiving the signed agreement, the council has directed the staff to take the necessary steps to make alternative arrangements to ensure that a fair is offered at the fairgrounds, consistent with the council's commitment and the desire of the Petaluma community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that report. And now we'll move to general public comment. And during general public comment, the public is invited to make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction and that are not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited, up to three minutes per person, but depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council, time will be allocated in equal shares, totaling no more than 20 minutes. And do we wish to have the city attorney's comments on this? Are we pretty good shape tonight?
I think so. Just a reminder that city council meetings are limited public forums. Participation by members of the public is limited to topics within the council's subject matter jurisdiction on items that are not on the agenda under general public comment, and it's limited to comments on items of business that are on the council's agenda. And that's to ensure that we can conduct the public's business and recognize the public's right to participate without the meeting being disrupted. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. I'd like to ask our city clerk if we've received comments by emails ahead of the meeting?
Yes, we received 23 general public comments, and those are posted online with the agenda.
That's wonderful. Posted online. Appreciate that. And now I'd like to ask our moderator to give our messaging for how the public comment period works.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I will start a 30-second clock for general public comment. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if you have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in your comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A countdown will appear for the convenience of the speaker and viewers.
Thank you.
And, yeah. Do we have a number on the public comment?
We do.
Okay.
We have 14 speaker cards submitted at this time, and according to our procedures, that's 90 seconds for each speaker. We do appreciate everybody being here. We appreciate the impact of your presence, and for most effect in a limited 90-second time clock, if someone has made the point prior to you, say you support that point and be able to move into additional point there for most effectiveness. So thank you all for being here tonight, and let me take the cards. We are setting the clock at 90 seconds. Thank you very much. And the first speaker will be Sumayam Huganam, and that's to be followed by Marcia Harris. Please feel free to speak. Stand up there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. I am Sumayam Huganam, and I want to thank you all for being here and listening to what I have to say. I am here as a very proud Christian Arab woman. I have been a productive member in Petaluma for many years, and so has my father-in-law. He has four sons, and I'm proud to be one of his daughter-in-laws. I urge you to vote on a ceasefire resolution. I have three children. Those children, if they were born back in Palestine, they would probably be murdered at this point, and they are great kids. So I want you to see me. I want you to see me in my dish dash. I am proud to wear this this evening, and I hope you look at me and say, we really need to take a thought about this and say, we have productive members in our community that are not just Jewish, that are Christian. There are very few of us Christian Arabs left. We need a ceasefire for humanitarian reasons, and I hope you vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia Harris. Perhaps I left a piece out. I think we all support the speakers, but it's our protocol to not cheer or jeer any of the speakers. This will help us be able to speak more clearly. Thank you. Marcia Harris, to be followed by Gary Huntsman.
Hello, I'm Marcia Harris. I'm a longtime resident, business proprietor, homeowner, property owner, Petaluma, been here over 50-odd years. I thank your council for hearing us tonight. However, I do not support any resolution by the city of Petaluma on an entity, a foreign entity. The council here has been elected to do the council's business in Petaluma. We have many local issues that I know you're addressing, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing, but a resolution on a foreign government, I believe, is out of the jurisdiction, whether you believe or not believe the facts of it, but I believe it's out of the jurisdiction of the city council of Petaluma. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Gary Huntsman, to be followed by Jamie Bloom.
I'm Gary Huntsman, retired from various occupations, father of two daughters, one surviving. I live in Santa Rosa. This will be short, I personally cannot again support any council member who goes along with the genocide of the Palestinian people. With our own history of genocide of the people of these lands, I'm appalled that we're enabling Israel to commit the same shameful act. I, for one, do not want any of my tax dollars going into this blood pot. Certainly, those of us with children and others cannot continue to turn a blind eye. Perceptions are changing. I suggest that the council calls for a ceasefire now and stands on the right side of history. This must be resolved, and it's the least that we can do. Knowing Petaluma stands against hate, I know I'm in the right place. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And Jamie Bloom, to be followed by Mayan Pierre.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Jamie Bloom, president of the Board of Directors of the Benay Israel Jewish Center. The center has been part of the Petaluma community for 161 years. Last week, we had a meeting at the center, and many members expressed feelings. They were sickened by this war, overwhelmed, anxious, and fearful of being targeted. The majority were not in favor of a city resolution, because achieving wording that would satisfy all constituents is likely to prove impossible, resulting only in further Recently, the city of Berkeley decided not to take up a resolution. This is what Mayor Aragüe said, and I quote, "As mayor, it is my job to keep this community safe, and I remain committed to work..."
I'm sorry, your 90 seconds has run out. Thank you very much for speaking tonight. Our next speaker is Mayan Pierre, to be followed by Frida Shohin.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mayan. I'm an Israeli-American Jew and a Petaluma community member. I call on the city council to adopt a ceasefire resolution. I was staying at my mom's house in Tel Aviv on October 7th when I woke up to the sounds of sirens and explosions of bombs. As the horrors of October 7th progressed, I felt three things: sadness at the loss of Israeli life, fear for Gazans in the face of an Israeli retaliation, and fear for the inevitable increase in antisemitism that would follow a genocide performed in the name of the Jewish people. Antisemitism is real, and I state that I fear it continuing to rise if we do not stop this genocide. I do not fear an increase in anti-Jewish hate after adopting a ceasefire resolution. Instead, a ceasefire resolution shows a commitment to all human life, a commitment to the return of Israeli-Palestinian hostages, a commitment to the end of the ongoing horrors currently being levied against Palestinians, and an acknowledgement of the atrocities of October 7th. A ceasefire resolution proposed by this coalition of local Jews and Palestinians allows Jewish, Arab, and Muslim communities in Petaluma to come together in support of each other and the sanctity of life. Neither Israel nor other Zionist organizations in this city represent me, and I am mad that the mayor gave Rabbi Shalom the power to represent all of Petaluma's Jewish residents on the question of a ceasefire resolution. I was raised a Zionist, taught to fear Palestinians and Arabs, taught that my freedom is only possible at the cost of their lives. I mourn the humanity and empathy that I was required to abandon...
Thank you very much. Frida Shohin, to be followed by Chase Overholt.
Good evening. My name is Fadah Shaheen, and as a Palestinian born and raised in the West, I am keenly aware of the misconceptions about us caused by those in power stereotyping us to further their agenda. But I never, ever imagined that I would watch daily, live, the massacre of innocent civilians without any intervention or restraint. I love this community with all of my heart and have spent most of my adult life in service to it, but I'm not seeing its humanity extended to my people. Any effort to say, "We can't talk about a ceasefire because it's complicated," is simply serving that aforementioned political agenda. We are not asking for policy direction. We are simply asking for the bombing to stop. This is a humanitarian crisis, one in which the scope and speed has not been seen before. The devastation has reached catastrophic levels. There is no food. There is no water. There is no electricity. There is no medical aid. There is no shelter. And to conflate wanting that to end, to conflate wanting innocent civilians' children to receive the basic fundamental tools for survival, to conflate that with antisemitism is inexplicable. If we, as a people, cannot agree that bombing children is not okay, I am concerned for the future of humanity.
Thank you. And Chase Overholt. And I guess I should repeat that we're looking for not having that kind of outburst and a little more decorum in the council chamber so we can stay on message, and that would be our goal tonight. Chase, and to be followed by David Dodd.
Hi, my name is Chase Overholt. I am a Petaluma community member. I have coached gymnastics in this community and got to know pretty much every family here, and I believe that Petaluma does stand against hate, which is why I am here speaking today, because I believe that to end antisemitism, it is innately tied to ending the genocide in Palestine. Over the past year, the most far-right government in Israeli history has escalated its military occupation with violent expulsions, demolitions of homes, and military force being exercised on refugee camps. We are also calling for both the return of any Israeli hostages from Hamas and for Israel's misuse of force on Palestine families to end. I want to leave you with the fact that Hamas does not represent Palestine and the Israeli government does not represent the Jewish community. This is real, and it's an issue that falls on our laps here in California, in Petaluma, because we are funding this war with our tax dollars. If a city like Petaluma can adopt a resolution such as this, then we can push on our higher-up elected officials that have some say in whether or not our tax dollars go towards funding this genocide. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. David Dodd, to be followed by Luigi Petri Dove.
Hello, members of the city council and mayor. My name is David Dodd. I am speaking this evening in support of the resolution advocating for a ceasefire. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalists of Petaluma's Board of Trustees, who voted to support this resolution in line with our principle of commitment to justice, equity, and compassion in human relations. The ongoing war needs to end, and a ceasefire is a very first step. The president of the Unitarian Universalist Association, the Reverend Dr. Sophia Betancourt, has signed a clergy letter calling for a ceasefire, along with faith leaders from many traditions. I've been in dialogue with Rabbi Shalom Bockner of Benay Israel and have found that he is deeply opposed to this resolution, which gives me great pause. He stated to me that a resolution of this type will only have the effect of making the local Jewish community feel more isolated. Well, I certainly hope that is not true, and I call on anyone who hears hateful statements being made about others in our community to speak up on the side of love, to promote peace here in Petaluma. And it is just as important, if we can't make it happen here, how can we ever expect that it might happen anywhere? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Luigi Petri Dove, to be followed by Hanan Hanidi.
Hello, council members. My name is Luigi Petri Dove. There's a question burning a hole in the heart of our community, creating a rift in our community, and the question is, do Palestinian lives matter? Don't all lives matter equally? Palestinian lives are worth a lot, same as everyone else. Because life is devalued over there, then it has less value over here. If a Palestinian dad crying over there doesn't matter, then a Palestinian American attacked over here matters less. And we are being targeted. In Vermont, in Michigan, at Stanford with a car, assault with a car, and right here in Petaluma, we all gave, I applaud the community for all giving our support when the local restaurant was defaced with a racial slur. But we need action. We need action. We need more than talk. We need to do things. We need to pull together. So please do your jobs, protect the community, send the right message. We're not making international law here, as was said. We're expressing a sentiment: ceasefire now.
Thank you. Hanan Hanidi, followed by Stephen DeLu.
My name is Hanan Hanidi. I am Palestinian. I have taught in Petaluma. I started the nonprofit Petaluma Pride. I have served this community for a very long time. I raised my children here. I love Petaluma. Four years ago, the Proud Boys physically surrounded me in Petaluma because of who I am. When I spoke with the authorities, I was told that there was nothing they could do, that they couldn't stop them from assembling. On a local Palestinian-owned restaurant, there were racial slurs written. The police were contacted, and there was no physical presence after that, and the owners continued to exist in fear. The last few months, Palestinians in America have been stabbed, shot, screamed at, and their businesses and homes have been targeted. We are living in fear, and as we go to our elected officials and authorities, we continue to receive a message that our safety is not priority, and yet we continue to show up across this country, asking our elected officials to call for a ceasefire even though we are in physical danger. The rest of the world views this as an American and Israeli war. That means that as Israel continues to move forward in continuing genocide and bombing neighboring countries, assassinating a top Iranian military official, we Americans, Petalumans, are being put at risk. City council Palestinians are human, too. Our votes, our tax dollars, our contributions, our lives also have value. We ask that if you truly believe that you are united against hate, that you show us here in this room.
Thank you. Stephen DeLu, to be followed by Zaira Garcia.
One comment we used, our argument against a ceasefire resolution, is that the council only deals with local, not national, issues. But that view is contradicted by the facts I placed on the public record several days ago. The council does address national issues. What, after all, is the Blue Zone project or the Cool Cities undertaking? Or, for that matter, the overarching assumptions built into the Climate Action Plan, which presume cooperation between local governments and the national government in addressing climate change. As to my main reason for supporting the resolution, I note that I am one who believes that there is no justification to respond to an act of injustice with another act of injustice, especially when those most likely to be affected are innocent civilians. Hamas did a horrific thing, killing 1,200 Israelis and taking 240 hostages. But it is far more than equally terrible to retaliate in ways that caused the death, thus far, of 23,000 Palestinians, 70% of whom are women and children.
Hi, I'm...
Thank you.
... US Americans who have proudly...
Your time has run out for the moment. Appreciate this. Zaira Garcia, to be followed by Sam Tuttleman.
Hello, just want to make sure you can hear me. All right. So I'm not new to the podium. You all have seen me stand up here for basically every social issue here in Petaluma. I unequivocally denounce white supremacy because we know it's right here. Racism is not only a public health issue or an American issue, it's also a global one. It's why we can't stop talking about it, because it impacts our very lives, as you've heard in these testimonies here today. There are studies on it, and because I only have a minute, I will just stick to these crucial facts: not misinformation, not propaganda. The United States has voted no and vetoed efforts on all humanitarian efforts brought forth by the UN. There has been a lack of congressional oversight due to the Biden administration's unilateral weapons sale to another country without congressional approval and without any public explanation or transparency. A senior education official was appointed by... A senior education official was appointed by Biden to the Department of Education to overhaul this student loan system, and on January 4th, he resigned citing the administration's failure to protect Palestinian civilians in Gaza from Israel's offensive and deadly war with Hamas. Former Vice President Mike Pence visited Israel Occupation Forces and wrote on an artillery shelf for Israel. How can you ask us to ignore a genocide at the global stage when the United States of America is helping to wipe out Palestinian bloodlines with our government voting against humanitarian aid indiscriminately aiding military to Israel and elected slash former officials signing off bombs that are dropping down on innocent lives?
Thank you. Sam Tuttleman, that's our last speaker card for the evening.
My name is Sam Tuttleman. I've lived in Petaluma since 1981. My spouse and I raised a child here, and now we're growing old here. Not my child, my son, my wife and I. Would all the Jewish folks in the chamber who support a ceasefire resolution please stand for a moment if you're able? To quote Rabbi David Cooper of Oakland's Cahela Community Synagogue, "The world needs to understand that the Jewish community is not of one mind about the assault on Gaza. Israel does not speak for the entire Jewish community." A critical mistake was made when Rabbi Buckner of Synagogue Benet Israel was given what in essence was veto, given veto power over the wording of a resolution. Not because the rabbi is not an honorable man, but because nobody, nobody of elected officials in this country has the right to determine who speaks for the Jewish community. And I am Jewish, I've experienced antisemitism, good portions of my family were wiped out in the Holocaust, and I could go on, but I won't. I won't repeat the arguments for why you need to pass a ceasefire resolution. We urge you to avoid transparently irrelevant arguments designed to allow you to look away from the horrors. Looking away is a curse of our modern age. Please put the ceasefire resolution on the next council agenda. As a community, Petaluma can't look away.
Thank you. That concludes the 90 seconds. And that's our last speaker card for the evening. And with that, we close general public comment and continue with the council agenda. Next is council comments. And historically, we've gotten a little long in our council comments, and so this is a chance for councils to talk about their liaison appointments, assignments, and other important council topics that need, but they need to be brief and concise, and that gets us to the business matter of our meeting later tonight. So we're going to set our council clock similar to what we had for a public clock at 90 seconds. And I'd like to ask Councilman Schrebs to start us off tonight.
First, thank you all for showing up and speaking and showing your support. As far as just the council business is, over the last, it's been holidays, pretty quiet, almost very little has happened. The one critical thing that did happen a couple weeks ago is that George Beeler asked me to meet with some Palestinian group, talk about the resolution at that time. We found that the resolution was a bit biased at that time, and I asked, could you, and I said even the last council meeting, could we please include some of the Jewish community in discussions to bring it a little bit more balanced? They did. It's a much, the new one I just saw, I think it was just yesterday, came out. It is much more balanced. It is asking for peace on everybody's side. It's asking for the UN to step in. It's asking for our government officials to pay attention, to get humanitarian aid where we need it. So it's the right thing. So I'm, the new resolution that has been written is fully balanced and asking for peace not only over there, but right here. We need peace here as well. So I'm now fully in support of this new resolution, and would like to see the council vote on it. Unfortunately, I'm going to be absent the next one, but I sure hope that it does move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Posake.
Thank you, Mayor. I have been attending my assignment meetings. I want everyone to know that, but I also want to speak in relation to many of the public speakers tonight. At the last meeting, I mentioned that I didn't like use of the word, or I didn't like the word ceasefire being eliminated from my language. I say this time that I now believe it's quite likely, as some folks have already mentioned, that not using the word ceasefire could be increasing antisemitism locally. I'm not certain of anything, but I think that is as likely as not. If we don't join the calls for peace, we're implicitly advocating for continued war and death. And many international organizations have made this request in accordance with international humanitarian law. I think it's time for us to place ourselves on the right side of this moral question. Thank you. And I'm in favor of a resolution and happy with the latest one presented. Thank you.
Councilmember now.
Well, thank you for the, our audience and for coming out this evening. And I like the signs that say, "Love thy neighbor, peace on earth." And I support whatever our city attorney drafts and that we can all get behind. That is acceptable and won't have consequences in our community. We want to continue our anti-hate promotion that we started in 2023 and continue it right through the new year and for years to come. As far as my liaison, I'm going to keep it short by just saying, go to the website, visit petaluma.com. There's lots of wonderful ways you can attend community events and see the love, not hate, in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Posake, I want to offer you a chance. Do you want to talk about homelessness point in time, or do you want me to do a commercial to recruit for that event? Can the COC's point in time count?
Oh, okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
We don't often get a chance to recruit regarding our homeless situation for services from the public, and I just.
On the 26th of this month, the COC will be conducting at HUD, insisted, HUD requires this to receive their funding, a, the point in time count for the Sonoma, entire Sonoma County will be done that day. The counting starts early, but it's also over early. It starts at 5:00 AM at Cots on Friday, the 26th, and you're guaranteed to be done by 10:00. I've usually been done by 9:00 when I take part in this. And involves going out, usually three people to a car, one person with lived experience of homelessness, one with, one who works in the field, and one volunteer who has no other experience, just to help count folks. And it's instructive if you've never been on it, and it is a way to get to know some different folks if you take part. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a very important part of what we do, and so I appreciate your commenting on it. Councilmember Barnicle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a couple of appointments since the new year. Had my Sonoma Clean Power Board meeting, received the annual report. Not too much to encourage you all to read it, but it's, nothing really highlights coming out of it we're sharing here. And then we had our P-BAC meeting last Wednesday, and we reviewed the blueprint for carbon neutrality. And there was several points made about, about the blueprint, about how it needed to be stronger and clearer in terms of policy guidance for the general plan and other policy documents coming out of that. And just as far as the war in Gaza, I'm just sort of beyond, in my capacity right now to make strong statements that I feel, that I feel informed about, to be honest. I've got very little time, and, and not that I don't, that I don't care, it's that I don't have the words for what I see. Obviously, I want peace. I want the violence to stop, and I, and I want the hostages released, and I, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Healy.
Thank you. I don't have any liaison reports for the last two weeks, but I would agree with Councilmember Posake that participating in the point of time, point in time survey is very worthwhile and very helpful in terms of our homeless issue. I did that last year. You forgot to mention there's free doughnuts involved. And I, I think I concur most of the other council members who've spoken on the issue with Councilmember Barnicle, that I'm deeply appalled at what's going on in the Middle East right now. It's been going on in various forms for decades, and I don't think our city council weighing in a interformal way is going to be productive or helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kater Thompson.
Thank you very much. I do, I do want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Third meeting where we've had strong public support for trying to put words to what we're seeing. I mean, obviously, we're all aghast and shocked, offended about all the violence going on. And so I am hopeful that, that peace will come, that people will contribute and do the right things in that area. Separately, last week, the members of the Petaluma City Council received an antisemitic postcard sent to them at their homes. The most disgusting content you can imagine. These forms of hate speech are disgusting, vile, and incredibly disheartening that they continue to occur to members of our community right here in Petaluma. These incidents of hate impact individual community members as well as the entire community. As a community, we unequivocally detest and reject any incidence of hate, and this does not represent or align with our community values. The city stands united with our Jewish community and all marginalized groups against hate and all forms of hate speech. We've reached out to local Jewish groups, and we will continue to work with Jewish partners to understand and confront antisemitism. Our police department has aggressively investigates these kinds of incidents and crimes, and they're motivated by hate, actively investigating these incidents. We ask our community. There was no. If I could have one second. So I think what we'll do is we will move to a recess. We'll be back momentarily. Thank you very much. Do you want to recess?
The council is in recess. The council will be in recess until orders restored in the, the council will be in recess until order is restored in the chambers.
Whenever you're ready, we, we're back on recording.
Thank you very much. And the council is back from its recess, and we are now, we were towards the end of council comments. That concluded council comments, and it moves us over to city managers' comments for the evening.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, and community. And to our Arab residents, we see and hear you and, and hold you in our hearts. We know this is a tough time for everyone. The city has created a webpage called, on cityofpetaluma.org/streetpavement. Since the passage of Measure U, we've invested, or will be investing $45 million in our roads, and we have created a website that, a webpage that shows all the roads that are either, have been improved or will be improved. In addition, I wanted to recognize this Thursday is our Climate Action Manager, Rihanna Frank's last day.
Can I ask for a pause? I think we're not getting quite the volume we'd like from you.
That's all right.
And I'd like to ask that maybe the doors could get pulled in? Not, not the exteriors, the interior doors?
Yeah, we've got a TV there.
I think we should, yeah, we should have one door width open would be perfect. Thank you. And back to you, city manager.
I was just going to say that this Thursday is our Climate Action Manager, Rihanna Frank's last day. She's accepted the position with the county as their new energy and sustainability program manager. It's a great opportunity for Rihanna, and she'll be doing what she loves on a county-wide scale. We just really want to express our gratitude for all the work that she's done and brought us our climate action program to where it is and our fleet management program. So we just wish her the best and really want to acknowledge and thank her for all the work that she's done on behalf of Climate Action in Petaluma, and wish her the very best. And that concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that goes for all of us. It's a big step to get the climate agenda lifted, and she was a major player. We are now to our consent calendar for the evening, and before we move on, I'd like to look up and down the dais to see whether anyone has any interest in, in particularly revising any part of it or comment. And councilmember now.
I need to abstain from the fairgrounds, number six.
Item six, okay.
I have to recuse from that item.
Right. You can stay with us, and we will vote on that measure separately.
Okay.
And that, that works. And then also, I'd like to add probably more as instruction to staff and to be read into the record, on the council liaison appointments, we have an ad hoc committee that's for the fairgrounds, and it currently reads, "To discuss with the district," meaning the DAA. And I think that ad hoc committee needs to be refreshed, and I'd like to suggest that's probably the first action of that ad hoc committee or from staff to broaden it to say something like, "The master planning of the property and guiding the increased use of both temporary and permanent, of both temporary and permanent nature." So I'm thinking something like that would be appropriate. Does anyone want to help with that wording, or shall we just make that as direction to staff to update that? Seeing no objections or comment effort? And anything from the city attorney? Are we good? We're good? Good. Then at this point, I'd like to open public comment on the consent calendar. I have no cards for the consent calendar items. Did we receive any at the clerk, by email for the consent calendar?
No public comment was received.
Thank you very much. And with seeing no cards, I'd like to, would you like to speak? We do have public comment. A card is typical, I think. And it's on the consent calendar. Could you identify which consent item it is regarding?
The liaison.
My name is Nicola Frye, and I'm the chair of the Senior Advisory Committee, and I'd like to comment on number four.
Can I ask that, that you pull the microphone down to speak? And can I ask that we start the three-minute clock for the public? Thank you.
My name is Nicola Frye, and I'm the chair of the Senior Advisory Committee, and I would like to comment on number four, the liaison.
Please.
The Senior Advisory Committee does not have a city council liaison. We don't quite know why, and when that ceased to exist, it did happen before, but it stopped. We are, our liaison is Rachel Bear of the Rexon Parks Department, but because she is so busy, which, God, she does a great job. We have Aya, who is the supervisor of the senior center, is our liaison, but we oversee her as the, as a center, is our liaison, but we oversee her as a senior advisory committee, but then she's our liaison. So we're feeling kind of lost. We don't have a direction from the city council.
Thank you for the comment. I'm sure we'll be able to address that independently, provide some feedback to you probably at the next senior meeting. But with that, no further public comments, closing public comments. Back to council for any comments on... May I ask you to fill out the card and that kind of... For each of the items, we still do a card.
The public comment right now is for items on the consent calendar.
On the consent calendar only.
Consent calendar. The people do not consent to genocide. We do not consent.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment and continuing concerns.
[inaudible]
But if, as it's not on the agenda, thank you very much.
Here we are. Can we...
So we were at the moment of bringing it back to council. Councilmember Healy?
So I think on the senior advisory committee member issue, liaison issue, this has come up before, and maybe I'm misremembering things, but I think the formal reason why they don't have a council liaison is because they're not a commission, and we only have liaisons to commissions. But I think that's not a very satisfactory situation. And what I would like to suggest is that staff work on rotating this through is liaisons for one meeting, and we can all get a flavor of it. And I would ask staff to coordinate that and just tell us which meeting we're liaison of the month for.
Kind of on an informal...
Yeah.
Let's just step up and do that?
So with that, I'd be happy to move item six, I believe it was.
All but six, is that what you're saying?
No, just six only.
Moving six. Okay. You have a motion for moving six? And councilman Posecky?
I just brought up the liaisons here. There are committees that have liaisons. I mean, I...
Yes, in committees, other committees that don't.
Counsel, if I could, there's a little bit of an issue here, a legal issue, about liaisons. And that is, it's a quirk among the several quirks of our charter that it requires liaisons from the council for all commissions that are listed in the municipal. And it's also true that some of the committees have been created so as to also have council liaisons. But it's... If it weren't for the fact that the city's a charter city and those requirements to have liaisons, the incompatibility of office doctrine would not permit council members to sit on its own subordinate bodies because you'd be supervising yourself. But because we're a charter city and our local decisions, local regulations about that preempt inconsistent state law, that doctrine doesn't apply. But what that means is, when a subordinate body is created that is not a commission, which must by charter have a liaison that's a council member, the liaison requirement has to be in the enabling legislation. Otherwise, we have that same incompatibility of office problems. So obviously, the council has the power to do what it likes in terms of assigning liaisons or not, and we're happy to take whatever that direction is. But I need to... I'd want to go back and double check to see if that's some kind of a feature of the senior committee or if it's just a vacancy or what, and we can return to the council with that.
That's fine.
Okay?
That would be great. And do we have a second for the motion of item six?
Sure.
And that's a second from the vice mayor. Can we have a roll call vote, item six of the consent calendar with now abstaining or refusing?
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now recused. Posecky?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
And McDonnell?
Yes.
Motion passes six one... Or six zero, excuse me, with now recused.
Can we have a motion one through eight lacking six? May we have a motion for...
I'll make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Then Kater Thompson for the motion one through eight lacking six. Second from Posecky?
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posecky?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
And McDonnell?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Well, congratulations are in order. We now have ourselves a brand-new vice mayor for the evening. And congratulations in order to our outgoing vice mayor. Very much appreciate your year of service. And let's do a quick chair change so that we accurately reflect our efforts here. And a new year with a new vice mayor and a different chair. Good. Then let's move on to our public hearings matters for consideration. And tonight, item nine, public hearing to levy annual assessment for fiscal year 2024 for the downtown Petaluma Business Improvement District and resolution establishing the levy for the 2024 assessment for the downtown Petaluma Business Improvement District. Let's see. I believe we have councilmember Healy.
Yeah, so I will be abstaining on this as my office is within the district and I pay the annual levy. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to invite our senior management analyst, Nancy Sands, to make the evening's presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is the second step in the process to levy the annual assessment for the downtown Petaluma Business Improvement District. This step includes a public hearing where council will hear any testimony for and against the proposed levy, including any formal protest by businesses subject to the assessment. After the hearing, council will vote on whether to approve the levy. No correspondence was received prior to this meeting. And joining me to answer any questions on this item is Marie McCusker, Executive Director of the Petaluma Downtown Association, which administers the Business Improvement District. And our city attorneys are also available to answer questions on this item.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation and asking council if we have any questions here from the dais of Ms. Sands. Seeing none, I want to open public comment with the same consideration that a car... A speaker card is necessary to bring to the front for public comment on this particular item, the Business Improvement District. And seeing no one moving in that direction, I will ask if we've had any submitted prior to from the city clerk?
No public comment was received.
Thank you so much. And that closes public comment on the item. Back to the dais. Any discussion by council? And a motion. Motion by Posecky?
I'll second that.
And second by Kater Thompson. Roll call vote, please.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy recused. Now?
Yes.
Posecky?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
And McDonnell?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero with Healy recused.
Thank you very much, and we invite councilmember Healy back into the dais. And let's see. Our next item on the agenda tonight is an introduction, first reading, an ordinance of the City Petaluma Council establishing a process for hazardous vegetation and rubbish inspection and abatement for wildlife... Wildlife safe... Wildfire safety.
Fire.
Yes. And I'd like to have Jessica Powers, our fire marshal, carry the presentation.
Let me just get set up real quick. Thank you, Mayor, council, and community. My name is Jessica Power. I'm the fire marshal here in Petaluma. And with me tonight is Dylan Brady, one of our assistant city attorneys. So we're here to present the hazardous vegetation ordinance. This is essentially replacing the weed abatement process shown here that we've been following for many, many decades, where we would come to council, declare weeds, mail notices, have a public hearing, conduct the work, post the cost, and then place liens for anyone that didn't pay. I will not go into that in detail since I think we've all been familiar with that for some time to keep it short. And I'll turn it over to Dylan.
Thank you, Jessica. So when you look at the government code, it provides two processes for a city or jurisdiction to abate hazardous vegetation and rubbish, trash. Like Jessica said, this has been our process. This process is explicitly spelled out in the government code, these sections here. The other process is spelled out in the government code. It just says jurisdictions may create their own ordinance, and that is what we are doing here tonight. So really, our proposed ordinance, it is, I would say, about 80% the same language and process as the government code process, except we... And it's highlighted here what the main differences are. And that's probably what I'll highlight myself in this presentation. So the first hearing that Jessica said is for city council to pass a resolution that says the properties... And we spell out what those properties are in the resolution are public nuisances. We call that staff the weed abatement dance, where we have all the different recusals. And then Jessica and her staff send out those letters to the properties that lets them know that they are declared public nuisances. But what this proposed ordinance does is it combines the first two hearings. But before those hearings, staff will send out a letter to inform them, hey, property owner, tenant, there is going to be a city council hearing. We believe your property has overgrown vegetation or trash. You need to abate it. Come to this city council hearing to tell us why or to object. This letter, the government code, is required after the first hearing, but before the second hearing. So this letter will now be before the first hearing. The letter in the government code only requires it to be sent five days in advance of that hearing. Our ordinance says seven days. We will also publish the letter in the Argus Courier, so that's additional notice. And in the language for the notice, it will also include the tentative date for the city council hearing to place a lien or assess the property for the abatement for the work. So really, that is the main difference. It is combining the first two hearings and then additional notice through the form of publication in the Argus, and then in the notice saying what the tentative date for that lien hearing is. So that's really the main difference besides the ordinance, besides one other point. I think Jessica is going to talk about that real quick.
So the other thing that we included is coordination with our integrated pest management plan. We currently don't use any chemicals. Obviously, as we're coming in, as the weeds are already dry and reach their fire hazards, so the preventative chemical nature wouldn't be useful in this process. But we didn't want to eliminate that as an option as... If needed, as chemicals and technology changes. So we just referenced coordinating with our adopted integrated pest management plan.
Yeah, and I'll just talk about it real quick, Jessica. Thank you. So this is the exact same language as in the government code current process. If city council, as in that resolution, that declares properties public nuisances, if they also declare them, whereas it's seasonal and recurrent, the city is able to use chemicals to abate those properties. It has not been the practice of the city, but rather, like Jessica said, provide flexibility. Who knows what chemicals look like in the future? Maybe it makes sense to use chemicals for certain properties. This will allow the city to still have that ability, but it would be subject to the IPMP, which I believe will be adopted in the next couple of weeks or so. So that is the main difference. This ordinance provides... The real three benefits are, rather than the government code process, is when you combine the first two hearings, it will allow the city the ability to abate the public nuisances faster. It's more transparent. As the ordinance, it is in our municipal code, there will be publication in the Argus and information about when that lien hearing is, and more due process because of the additional transparency, which is good because that will allow more voluntary abatement. And as the city's cost, it is cost recovery, that will mean cheaper and as we're streamlining the first two hearings, it'll mean cheaper for the properties that the city does abate and liens. So that are the benefits of the ordinance, and I think that is it. And we're here to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. And bring it up to council for any questions. Council vice mayor Shribbs?
Just as maybe a comment or question in the use of the term chemical, just as a information, because that is my professional field, when talking about chemicals, that includes gasoline and diesel. Whether you put it on the ground on the plant or put it inside an engine, combustible engine, and then you use that to mechanically mow, there's still a chemical control agent, just using it a different way. So you need to maybe use the word herbicide or a sprayed herbicide to be more specific, rather than use the word chemical. So if we could change that particular verbiage around to make it a little bit more definitive on this, that would actually be helpful. And just like as a reminder that if we're going to use tractors to actually do weed management, it actually has a higher carbon footprint than using herbicides. Herbicides have a much lower carbon footprint, lower price tag, and that's why they're used internationally or in anything. So part of the IPM program hopefully will evaluate the combinations in which is actually the lower carbon footprint as well as environmental contamination, because both are environmentally contaminating in different ways. So we just need to evaluate that and use the IPM program hopefully as the guide. So just as a verbiage change, I would recommend.
Thank you for that comment, councilmember. And we are currently using and will continue to look for, if we change contractors that are exploring electric equipment per the council's direction several years ago.
Good. And then if you could put up... There's a slide up there. I think I saw earlier there was a... I think I wanted to make a comment. It had the yellow on it as to...
Can I pull up the ordinance?
Not this one, the next one? Yeah, on this one here. Just when you say publish letters in the Argus, the Argus, my understanding is that the Argus doesn't have as much circulation as it used to. So even though it may be a good way of getting it out legally, it really doesn't get it out to the public. And so that's just my only comment there. So is there another way we could, besides the Argus, is there another legal way we could use to get it out to the public?
Yeah.
That's a legal question.
We can always do additional noticing, but by resolution and provisions in the government code, the Argus is our official newspaper. So that's where our official notice has to appear for all kinds of different actions, land use actions, many things, ordinances, et cetera. So we can always do more than the required notice, but unless and until we have a different official newspaper, we have to do our noticing in the Argus.
Well, I'll just add to that. That's absolutely correct. In this, publishing in the paper is in addition than what the government code. The government code does not require us to publish the resolutions and notices in the paper. So if we feel that this additional notice won't provide any much utility, we can strike that out, and that would be an additional expense that the city wouldn't have to pay and eventually lien the property. So if that's council's pleasure, we can remove it.
Yeah, if we're looking at publications now, just legally, if websites would meet that requirement, whether or not just a website, the city website, would meet that requirement and have actually more readership and more acknowledgement upfront, just as a general policy. And we're just something to look at down the road if that's possible.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah, city council can absolutely remove this, and instead we can say post on the city's website, something like that.
Like that. I just asked a question on that. Thank you.
And while their circulation might be down, I think their web presence is getting stronger all the time, and perhaps they have more news reporting than the PD or the Chronicle combined here. So it's nice to have a local newspaper that covers local issues, even if it's only on wine. Councilman Posecky?
Yeah, I had a question, and I'm sorry. Dr. Shribbs may have said something about this, and I couldn't hear everything he said with the other stuff going on. But I wondered if, you know, the next slide that has yellow on it references the IPMP, and I'm wondering... It wasn't on the last agenda, I mean, future agendas. And I wonder if we're going to get to the IPMP before the next season that would use chemicals on weeds. Anybody?
I... It's on the... Yeah, February 5th. So the IPMP is coming back. The Integrated Pest Management Plan is coming back on February 5th. Yep, to council.
Thank you.
Councilmember now?
I just wanted to add to when you look at the newspaper, the hard copy... I just wanted to add to, when you look at the newspaper, the hard copy, the public notices are the smallest fonts ever, but when you're on your computer, you may enlarge it. So it's actually, I think, probably getting more readership because it's online and on the internet, just FYI.
Thank you. And I do like you taking the opportunity to get some feedback into the IPMP before it gets to council. So good on that effort. And with that, we'll move to public comment. And public comment is typically through filling out a form, back the room, walking it to the city clerk in this area. I see no one making a move in that direction. And I'd like to ask the city clerk if we received online comment about this item.
No public comment was received.
Thank you very much. And that will close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the council. Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Kater Thompson with a motion, and Healy with a second. And roll call vote, please.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
And McDonnell?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff. And now we move to the workshop session for the evening, which is flood and sea level rise mapping and update workshop. And for this, I'd like to ask our Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities, Gina Benedetti-Petnick, to help us out with the presentation. But I'm sure that's going to be a minute of setup time. Am I correct there that we'll need a minute of setup time? And so council can recess for five minutes and meet again here in five minutes, if we could post that recess for five. We are called back to order at this time, and so we'd ask for the audience's cooperation And on the flood and sea level rise item, back to our Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities, Gina Benedetti-Petnick. Antine.
Thank you. I am getting ready to share this. One moment. That should do it. Is that okay on that screen?
Gina, I'm happy to share my screen if you'd like.
Thanks. Okay. Brian O. is going to kick us off this evening, our CDD director. Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Thank you, Gina. Happy New Year to the mayor, to council, to members of our community. Appreciate the time that you've provided staff for this informational workshop. This is step one in a multi-step process for some long-range planning as it relates to not just the general plan and future, you know, 50, 100 years out, but also near-term impacts to our community as it relates to flooding within our community. And so again, Gina, just next slide here. The purpose of the workshop really is to set a base level of understanding. There are a set of maps, just back one. So the big purpose is to understand the modeling approach. And so we have a full staff here this evening to walk the council through and the public through. So we can get a base level understanding of the modeling and then also the maps that we have to walk the council through this evening. That is the main objective for tonight. And ultimately, you know, how do we, what do we do with this information? And so we have new data, new modeling, new maps, and how, what do we take away from this as a community so that we're resilient, not just now, but for future generations of Petaluma's? And so with that, I will turn it over to Assistant Director Gina Benedetti-Petnick. She's our floodplain administrator, and she is here with a number of our consultants to walk us through the modeling, walk us through the mapping, and then I'll come back and talk a little bit about general plan process, three quarters of the way through. Gina?
Thanks. Thanks, Brian. So good evening, council and staff and community members that have joined us tonight. We're here to roll out a lot of information tonight. Some of it will be relatively technical. And we're going to try and do this systematically. It may seem a bit odd, but I'm going to, with my consultants, with our consultants, we're going to walk through some of the basics of the models and the maps. And then we're going to take a break and take questions on those assumptions and that methodology. And then we're going to look at the maps, so we're not going to look at the map straight away. We want to explain what they're about first and give you some context to better understand what we're sharing. And then we'll go through the maps, and then we'll take another break for more questions. And then we'll be wrapping up with some discussion about the general plan update after that. So what I'd like to share with this slide is that this has been a technically rigorous process. We've used up-to-date data, much more robust data than we've ever used before in the city, focused on Petaluma's needs very specifically. And of course, with flood data, that's not unusual that it be focused on Petaluma, but with sea level rise data, that's a new animal. We haven't really done that to the extent we, no one has ever done that to the extent we have here. So we've really broken through some barriers, I think. After we created a model for how rain would fall and flooding would occur, then we tested it against real storms that would fall. And we calibrated it. So we took that data and we said, does this really match what happened in the 2006 storm? Does this really match what happened in 1980, whatever, right? And we looked at some of our biggest storms, and we calibrated the data we had and looked at it next to those storms to do a reality check, to make sure that we weren't just looking at a bunch of data that wasn't based in experiential reality. So that's what we call calibration. And as it turned out, the bottled flood data that we had looked amazingly close to what we were calibrating against, to those experienced storms. So the modeling to integrate the rain flood maps and the predictive sea level rise maps basically identified anticipated impacts from climate change, that stuff that's in the future. It's predictive. We don't have data on it. There's data being collected, but it's, it has to, it has to look at the data, and then it has to project percentage chances of that occurring. And so we call that predictive modeling. And we take that against the flood model, which is based on historic data. And we ended up layering those maps, because we heard from the community over and over again that they wanted to see the comprehensive, the comprehensive look at what could happen to Petaluma in the future with climate change considerations and with, and with sea level rise and with historic rain experience. And that's what we've done with this project. I should mention that in the upper left of your screen, we followed best guidance from FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association, from NOAA, the National and Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, and from California OPC, the Ocean Protection Council. We're going to use those acronyms a lot, so I'm ruling them out early. And they really were, all three of these agencies provided tremendous, tremendously helpful guidance that we relied upon. And I think Sebastian will be speaking more to that later in the presentation. So real quickly, floodplain management, a little bit about what that is. I'm the city's floodplain administrator, and our job in the city is to prepare for the future. It's what floodplain management's all about. As we all know, floods can happen anywhere and they can wreak havoc pretty quickly. We keep working to keep our community safe by minimizing that risk and minimizing the damage. And how do we do it? We coordinate with FEMA, with FEMA and NFIP, which stands for the National Flood Insurance Program. We work with them on what's called our CRS rating. CRS stands for, I'm sorry for all the acronyms, they just exist, and I can only help you work through them. CRS is a community rating system. And that is a system that is managed through the NFIP, and it helps us establish discounted insurance rates for our residents that reside in the floodplain. And we do that by best practices with our floodplain management. And the other bullet I have on here on the right talks about improving flow in the rivers and creeks. And so in addition to creating planning maps like we're going to show you tonight, we also engineer projects to better manage our water flow. And some of the completed flood projects that we have already have under our belt here in Petaluma, for example, is Peyran Reach and the Denman Reach projects. The Peyran Reach project is, of course, the flood wall that the Corps of Engineers installed in collaboration with the city. The Denman Reach, four phases of Denman Reach? I'm looking for Pam. I think that's right. And those were designed to decrease flooding along Industrial Avenue. And that project included purchasing five parcels along the river and widening and deepening the water floodplain to help it spread to open space, rather than into the businesses along that stretch. And then Capri Creek was another project designed to reduce out-of-bank flooding during larger storms. That's east of McDowell Boulevard to Maria. And then the bottom tag is what we're here to discuss tonight, and that's updating flood models and maps. And again, the updated flood maps have been based on state-of-the-art modeling technology with more robust data. And Dave with West Consultants will be here to explain some of that for us tonight. And then the sea level rise map layering is looking at several different scenarios that we layer over the rainfall maps to better understand the combined risks for long-term planning. These updated models will help inform the general plan policies. That's why we're co-presenting here with our community development department and our planning department, who've been instrumental in helping us bring this forward. And with that, I think, I guess it's a good segue to introduce our consultants. Two consulting firms have worked very closely with staff over the last year, collaborating together and with us to bring this forward. And Dave Smith with his team at West Consultants have performed much of the flood modeling work. And Sebastian Birch, sitting next to me with Sherwood Engineers, has been working with both the general plan consulting team and with us on the sea level rise components and considerations for this modeling. So with that, a little bit about West Consultants. Dave Smith has been working with City of Petaluma for many years. He's helped us with many, much of our modeling over the past couple of decades. And he manages the San Diego office. He's joining us remote this evening on Zoom. And I can't see you, Dave, but I know you're there. And he'll be presenting some of the modeling assumptions and some of the technical details about the flood modeling shortly. And then, again, next to me is Sebastian Birch with Sherwood Engineers. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Sebastian. I think, there you go.
Great. Thank you very much. Is this working for everybody auditorily? Okay. So we're sure Design Engineers, we're an international civil engineering firm. Main offices for our coastal resilience group are in San Francisco, New York. I work out of the Petaluma office. We've been engaged with general plan update and other projects within the watershed. This has been a really exciting project for me, because we've been doing a lot of coastal resilience work, but it's usually, it's always been not in the city where I live. So this has been really exciting to actually be looking at my own, my own property. I live just outside city limits, inside the Petaluma River watershed. So Petaluma, it's a really interesting place, and the city is in an interesting place on our river. We're actually a tidal slough. So that means water's moving through the city in two directions. Sometimes it's moving downriver, and sometimes it's moving upriver. So when it rains, water's moving across the land, through creeks, into the river and out towards the bay. And water will also come up the river from our daily tides. And we also get water coming up the river from a phenomenon called storm surge. So don't worry, you don't have to read all of this. The idea is there's a lot of different factors that you have to consider about how an area floods. And Petaluma, because we are getting water from both sides, mean we have even more factors to consider around flooding. So the lower portions of the Petaluma River are affected by both rainfall down and storm surge and tides coming up. Some of these things on this map, luckily, we're not affected by. We don't have to worry about wave swell or some other factors. So as rain falls on the city and surrounding areas, it's got to work its way through the creeks and to the river and to the bay. And our concern is that, does it flood things along the way? Those tide cycles that go up and down two times a day, and particularly those highest tides, those king tides, they can already cause flooding right now, even without any rain. There's other factors, like seasonal factors, El Nino, that we're experiencing. It can raise or lower the month for, raise and lower the river for months at a time. Or if there's a particular storm surge off the coast, that can raise the level of the ocean and therefore the bay for days or weeks at a time. And of course, we know that sea level is rising. So these events can interact to create, to increase the extent of flooding. So we have to consider which of these factors happen at the same time, and we have to consider happening together, and which of them don't happen at the same time, and we have to think about them separately. So there's a lot of things to consider, and we're actually going to be going all over them. We can simplify that map, that list of factors, down into three main categories. There's three types of flood, surface water flood that the city has to prepare for. There are king tide floods, so that's the highest tide of the year, and it happens every year, two to three times usually. And that one's pretty easy to model, because we have data on it, and it's very easy to predict. You know where they're, you know when they're coming, days ahead of time. And we have tide gauges that have told us how those king tides behave. Then the next type is rainfall flooding. That's rain falling on the city and also the watershed, all that area going up the city to the top of Sonoma Mountain, out to English Hill, our contributing watershed, that water trying to get out. Though what we look at there is the 1% flood. We call, the flood that has a 1% chance of happening every year, some people call that the 100-year rain event. What fewer people consider is that there's this third category, this storm surge. That's an extreme high water level in the river due to atmospheric conditions, completely separate from rain. It might happen on a blue-sky day. Completely separate from rain, it might happen on a blue-sky day. We, when we're looking at that, you typically also look at this 1% chance, that storm surge that has a 1% chance of happening any given year. We, that's also from tide gauge data and modeling provided to us by the Army Corps of Engineers. A lot of people don't know, you know, don't see the difference between the rainfall and storm surge mapping. Because the flood maps we're used to looking at, which is the FEMA flood map, actually merges those two flood types together and shows them as the same color. But we already consider both of those. They're just baked into that FEMA map that we're all used to looking at. So to predict how, that storm surge information is pretty much given to us by the Army Corps of Engineers. But to predict how rainfall might create flooding and how that might get worse in the future, you need to consider all these different variables into something called a, into a flood model, using a software tool called a flood model. So what is the flood model? So the flood model is software that has four main factors. It generates an estimate of what areas might flood, given estimations and calculations of all these different factors. The four key factors are the shape of the land of our watershed, the amount of rainfall, and where it falls. That's very important because it doesn't fall evenly across the whole watershed. Then you need to know of that rain that's falling, how much of it runs off? And how fast that runoff gets to the river? How long does it take to all concentrate and hit the river? And then you also need to know the height that the river is that that runoff has to fight against. Is it high tide? Is it low tide? How hard is it for the water to get out? So first off, you have to select the right-sized rain event. How big of a storm are we talking about? The city experiences a lot of small rain events every year. The larger events are less common. We have to pick the right type. And again, that common standard for flood modeling, what the city has used historically, is a rain event that's so large that has historically only a 1% chance of happening every year, that 100-year rain event. They can be more intense, but they have a less chance of happening. So at some point, they become less relevant as a planning tool because they're so unlikely. The 100-year rain, that's been the standard for the city. It's been the standard for, is the standard for most planning efforts. And Dave is going to be describing how the software model was created, which predicts what areas have a 1% chance of flooding from that rain event currently, with the current understanding of our city and our oceans and our rain. And so I'd like to reintroduce Dave Smith at West Consultants to present on the process of the flood model.
Thanks, Sebastian. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, good.
Great. So this slide, we say we use the best model, and I really believe that. The city had previously adopted the use of a model called XP Storm, which was an excellent model choice 18 years ago and possibly even five years ago. But recent advances in HEC-RAS now make that the model of choice for Petaluma. And I'll break that down for you. HEC stands for the Hydrologic Engineering Center. And RAS stands for River Analysis System. And we're also using features of HEC-HMS for hydrology coupled together with HEC-RAS for hydraulics. So HMS stands for the Hydrologic Modeling System. And this graphic illustrates some of the basic reasons for moving to the HEC software. HEC-RAS, the 2D model, does a better job dealing with the flow that gets out of bank and into the adjacent areas, which we call overbanks. And the HEC software will allow us to model the entire Petaluma River watershed instead of limiting ourselves to the city boundary. While both XP Storm and RAS are used regionally, HEC-RAS has a much larger user base and is really the gold standard for hydraulic modeling, not only in the U.S. but around the world. And it's free to use, unlike XP Storm, which was proprietary software and very expensive. And finally, the HEC software is fully supported by the Army Corps of Engineers at the Hydrologic Engineering Center in Davis. And there are teams dedicated to improving the software and standing behind the product. So on this slide, this is an illustration of the modeling process. We're using the best model, HEC-RAS 2D coupled with HEC-HMS. We're also using the best available data specific to Petaluma. And this includes the selection of rainfall data, terrain data, which is the ground surface, and structure data. And during the model process, we got as granular as possible. We walked the streams to determine the roughness values, which are higher for heavy vegetation like willows and very low for paved areas like streets. And we added hundreds of streams and bridges. I could spend a whole hour talking about the level of detail of this model, but to quote the British statistician George Box, "All models are wrong, but some are useful." And to make sure this model is useful, the model was checked reach-by-reach for reasonableness, as Gina was talking about, and compared with and calibrated to actual events that have happened recently in Petaluma, the three largest events of record. And so the point we want to make, make sure and communicate is that this model is state-of-the-art and useful for planning decisions. Go to the next one. So you might be wondering, you know, what is hydrology and what is hydraulics? So we wanted to not skip over that. Hydrology is the process of rainfall to runoff, how much rain soaks into the ground versus how much flows toward streams and rivers. And then hydraulics basically tells us how high those streams and rivers get. In this slide, we're showing some key components of the flood model. I'm going to start in the lower right corner with rain. West performed a custom rainfall study using data through 2023 to determine how much rain is reasonable, which we'll call the 100-year storm depth, where that rain falls within the watershed, and we call that the spatial distribution, and how quickly it falls over the course of a 24-hour period. We call that the temporal distribution. So those three pieces together are then entered into the model. And then moving to the bottom left, we have hydrology and hydraulics. The model components include the ground surface data, the field surveys, land use data, and vegetation levels in creeks. And then moving diagonally to the top right, it says mean higher high tide. This is the starting point or boundary condition for the model at the downstream end and represents the average of the daily highest tide and is computed by NOAA at the Upper Drawbridge Tide Station. And in the remainder of this presentation, we'll refer to this tide level as high tide. But keep in mind that it's really the average of the highest daily tides. The value is equal to 6.35 feet in the 88 vertical data. And this is an important data value in the model because the higher tide levels that we have, the more flooding there is upstream when we add rainfall. And speaking of higher tide levels, another important model component is consideration of sea level rise. So sea level rise was determined based on the current science and much more later in the presentation on that. The next slide is hydrology, the HEC-HMS. This slide provides an illustration of the entire Petaluma watershed and the 154 sub-basins that were utilized. And this speaks to the granularity of the modeling. The sub-basins are color-coded by stream with Adobe Creek on the far right, then Washington, East Washington, Capri, Corona, and the upper watershed with Kelly and Thompson on the south end. So the city boundary is included in this graphic and you can see how large of an area beyond the city boundary is part of the watershed. And so the upper watershed produces nearly half of the flow in the Petaluma River. In the hydrologic model, a unique amount of rain is entered into each one of these sub-basins. And the model computes how much water sinks into the ground and how much is runoff. So the next slide for hydraulics. The hydraulic model then takes that runoff and computes how high the streams and rivers also rise, also considering tide level. The hydraulic model includes very detailed data describing the ground elevation, structures such as culverts and bridges, and roughness characteristics of the entire watershed. So the graphic in the center is an actual clip from the model showing the terrain data in the background with green areas representing low ground and brown areas representing high ground, and the water is in the, in blue. So the graphic in the lower right is illustrating one of the bridges included in the model. This is a cross-section view and it illustrates the bridge deck configuration and pier dimensions for that specific bridge. There was a question received about a tool called Flood Factor. And this is a good opportunity to underscore the amount of detail we're including in HEC-RAS that is much better than Flood Factor for data such as this bridge data and also the highly detailed terrain, the rainfall data, vegetation levels in creeks, weirs, culverts, and other model inputs that result in much better data than available on Flood Factor. And to describe how the model was configured to account for future changes, I'm going to pass it back to Sebastian.
Thank you, Dave. So what we were looking at there was, how do you make a model to understand what's happening now? And most cities plan around the current risk from floods. It's always how we've done it. Petaluma wants the general plan to guide how the city will be resilient to floods, not just now, but also in the future. And many factors might change going into the future. That's where we need the model to make sure we have an accurate understanding of what happens now. And then we can start changing things and predicting what might, what might the flood look like in the future. There are some concerns from climate change, like rainfall getting more intense or storm surge getting more intense, that currently are not sufficiently understood or don't have enough regional precedence from a local agency or a state policy guidance to utilize reliably. And this came in, in one of, in questions from the community about that, that need to consider. There are some predictions, many predictions, that say rainfall intensity is expected to increase over the next, over the coming decades. And that is something that we want to start working into the model, but there wasn't, there isn't currently sufficient data and a good, reliable enough source to make an estimate for how much more intense is the storm going to be in the future. Fortunately, we have an update on that. Been coordinating with Sonoma Water and we are expecting within about a year that they will have completed their climate model downscaling effort, which kind of zooms in, zooms in on a climate model and says, "In Petaluma, how much more intense do we think the storm will get? How much more intense do we think the rain will get?" And what's, so we couldn't include that reliably in the current model. But what's great about, now that we have a tested model that's calibrated to our watershed, in the future, we can update that on a faster cycle than you would typically do waiting for FEMA to update and approve maps. There's a key principle here is that we absolutely are going to maintain our FEMA certifications and our ratings, that's really beneficial to the community. We're allowed to be safer than that. We're allowed to plan for a worse flood. That's what we're talking about now. So another factor to consider in the future is, you know, how much of the land in the city might be paved in the future? How many more buildings might we have? That was also experimented in during this model process. And interestingly, and we can talk about this more during Q and A if you like, the model was proving that it was not significantly impacted by changes to how much concrete and buildings there are within the city. It appears that the water that floods the city actually, pretty much, for the most part, comes from outside the city, comes from the contributing watershed. And so we can talk about that more later. Impervious cover has a lot of serious impacts, a lot of issues with impervious cover. But they don't, in this city, seem to have a really significant effect on the 100-year flood. Sea level rise, however, is well-understood. There's got really good guidance documentation from the state, lots of local precedence, and really reliable data sources we can use on that. And we know it has an effect on the city. So let's discuss how to factor in sea level rise. So where, what's our source for sea level rise predictions? The main source is a California guidance document. It's developed by multiple agencies in partnership with research institutions inside California and outside. And it provides a really well-researched and a really nuanced process to guide sea level rise planning. A lot of cities and agencies are using that, including a lot within the Bay Area. Sea level rise predictions were known from a previous effort in the Sea Level Rise White Paper at the beginning of the general plan process to have a significant effect on the city. That source is that Ocean Protection Council Document 2018, their guidance on sea level rise. And it publishes not just how much sea level rise might happen in different years, but how likely it is to get that much. We need both. We need an impact and we need a probability to be able to do this planning. So that lets us select, say, a high level of sea level rise for efforts that are really vulnerable to flooding. And you might pick a lower level of sea level rise for efforts that are appropriate, that have less vulnerability to flooding. The guidance also lets us select sea level rise predictions for any decade. Middle of the century and end of the century were what we had selected next up. Don't worry, okay, here's the graph for those of us like me that like to do everything by graphs. There are a lot of different predictions of sea level rise. There are some estimates that say there will be very little. And there are some estimates that say by the end of the century, there will be six feet, seven feet, nine feet. So how do you pick between all these different possibilities? So, a key assumption that we made, that's also in alignment with the guidance from the state, is that sea level rise scenarios need to be taken really seriously and you can't be optimistic about climate change. The sea level predictions that we used all assume that global greenhouse gas emissions do not significantly drop in the future. In fact, they continue to rise for many decades. That's the first assumption. It's a pessimistic assumption, but we have to play it safe in that way. So while Petaluma clearly working to make significant progress on our emissions, for this purpose, we don't want to be optimistic about global resolution to climate change. We're preparing for those bad outcomes. So rather than use that lower blue area on the right of the graph, which has that optimistic low expectation of sea level rise, we're using the red band, which is also the OPC recommendation, which is a higher projection. We selected three sea level rise predictions to model during the flood effort. One for the middle of the century and two for the end of the century. Again, charts, we'll walk through this. So for mid-century, we have very little time to prepare for a flood that might happen in the mid-century, right? We have 25 years, say. So we used the highest amount of sea level rise that the state provided a probability for. If we follow the cursor over here, we're calling that the very low probability sea level rise. And how you read this, this chart is at the bottom of the blue column, you'll see there's an, the state thinks there's an 83% chance that we will get 0.6 feet of sea level rise. As you go up the chart, there's a 50% chance we're going to get 0.9 feet of sea level rise, almost a foot. As you go up the chart, notice our likelihood is getting less. This is getting less and less likely, but the sea level rise amounts are going up and up. There's only a 17% chance we'll get 1.1 feet. There's a 5% chance we'll get 1.4 feet. And what we selected for the mid-century was this very unlikely scenario. Only a 0.5% chance that sea level will reach 1.9 feet by the middle of the century. So that is the, the appropriate because of the short planning horizon. So we selected that, that worst-case scenario. That's the starting point for sea level. We don't bother considering anything less than that. That's useful for certain things, but we also have to think about the end of the century as sea level rise continues to go up. So for the end of the century, we have two selections that we use. One that has a low probability and one that has a very low probability. So for the end of the century, you see that predicted amounts of sea level rise change. Again, we're assuming greenhouse gases continue to increase. Let's set that as an assumption. Starting at the bottom of that column, 96% chance that we're getting at least one feet of sea level rise. So very likely, we're going to get at least that much. Then there's less chance that we get two and a half feet. Looking at the area that says 17%, there's 17% chance we'll get 3.4 feet of sea level rise by the end of the century. That's the amount that was selected to guide most aspects of the general plan update. What they call that is, over there on the left, you see that likely range. That's, that's the amount that the state, in looking at the data, says, "This is the amount we think is likely, somewhere inside there." Everything outside that is a bit of an outlier, gets pretty unlikely. Inside that is the likely amount. You'll notice we picked the highest amount that the state thinks is likely to happen. That's going to be our main, proposing that to be our main tool for policy decisions. Now for certain things- Now for certain things, that's not sufficient. We have to play it even safer. And again, this is going based on OPC guidance and just the general process for mitigation of flood risk. For the end of the century, you'll see that those sea level rise numbers are the same. But in this scenario, we selected the amount that has the least, the high, the, the least amount of likelihood. 0.5% chance that we experience 6.9 feet of sea level rise by the end of the century. This is appropriate for very specific uses that have no tolerance to risk. That might be something that is basically impossible to move or it can't be changed and altered in the future to get it high and dry. Or it's a critical safety factor. This, things that fall into this category would be things like hospitals, evacuation shelters, critical power infrastructure. This is, so we produced this map as well because it's not, it's not the appropriate map for all planning efforts, but it is the right to use for really specific things. If we go about redesigning Ellis Creek or making significant modifications to critical city infrastructure, this might be more an appropriate product than the 3.4 feet of sea level rise. So now that we have those three selections, we can include those in the flood model and start seeing what happens to our three kinds of flooding, our king tides, our storm surge and our rainfall flooding when the ocean and the bay and the river are heightened because of that sea level rise. So first off, king tides and storm surge, this is a pretty straightforward process for how do you consider, how much worse do they get when you have a higher ocean? So we're pausing conversation about rainfall right now. We don't have to talk about the model right now. So king tide and storm surge floods, they can happen without rainfall. They can happen on a sunny day. We consider them independent of rainfall in, in this process and independent of the model that we were just looking at. For these, it's a pretty straightforward process to predict SLR. If you want to get Jargon Eats Direct Interpolation, the, for, for example, the king tide, so on the left, we can take the current king tide water level, which is that dark blue, and we can add on top of that our sea level prediction. In this case, for one of the maps, it'd be that 1.9 feet of sea level rise. Now we have a new water level. Then what we can do is see, well, what areas of the city are below that elevation? Basically a bathtub. What's, we have a new elevation of the water. What parts of the city are below that? And we can then make a map of those areas. Similarly, over on the right for the storm surge, the process is pretty similar. You take the current storm surge level, which is given to us by the US Army Corps, and we can add the sea level rise directly on top of that. We see what parts of the city are below that. And that provides us an estimation of what does the king tide or the storm surge look like in the future? So we can add any amount of sea level rise to that. Now rainfall is going to be more complicated because in rainfall, you have two things moving at the same time. You don't just have sea level has made the river higher. You're trying to figure out how difficult is it, is it for the rainfall to force its way out the river, out the entire slough, out the bay, when the river is higher? So we need to, it's called a compound event. We need to consider the compounding of those flood factors. Because if the river's higher, the rain's going to have a harder time getting out. So to consider rainfall, we're going to use the new model that Wes developed for understanding the rain event right now. The model is assuming that the river is at high tide for the entirety of the rain event. Now, that's not actually accurate. The river will go up and down during the rain event. If we want to go into details about why that was selected, we can at the end. The short of it is, it's conservative. It's what the Army Corps does for previous efforts. And the results are very well matched with what we actually measure in the river during our big rain events. So what we did for considering sea level rise is we took that high tide now and we said, well, there's 1.9 feet of sea level rise or 3.4 feet, whatever the number we pick. And we raised the tide by that amount and then we run the software again. You put the current storm, throw all that rain at the city and at the watershed and see how much harder it is for the water to get out. And we're expecting to see more areas be inundated. So broken up, there are three models that we're going to be looking at after we take some questions about this process. We have, for sea level rise, we're considering three sea level predictions. One for the mid-century. And we have two maps of that. We have one that's the rainfall and the storm surge. We can lump those together like FEMA lumps those together because they each have a 1% chance of happening. They don't happen at the same time. So you'll see a large green area flooding, like when you look at the FEMA flood, you see a large area flooding. That doesn't happen on the same day. It pretty much can't happen at the same time statistically. But since they have the same likelihood, we, we show them together. And then you'll see a map, a second map, which is the king tide in the middle of the century. And then we have the same pairing of maps, one for the end of century that has a low likelihood and one for the end of the century that has a very low likelihood of, of happening. So the maps are about to come, but first we want to take questions on process, climate change predictions, sea level rise predictions, and any other questions on our inputs to the model.
Thank you. I think it's important to get a break and have a few questions asked at this point. So bringing it up to council here, Councilmember Posake.
Thanks, ask a couple of questions, a couple of, yeah, questions from my, probably just mostly from my own knowledge. It appears from everything I've read there that this, the, the 1% storm surge is about the same order of magnitude as the king tide. Is that fair to say or?
Dave will have the numbers off the top of his head. I do not.
I just wondered if you seen it.
The, the storm surge is higher than the king tide.
Okay.
Yes.
And the, and the second one is, you sort of insinuate, or maybe the prior speaker did, that, that all storms have, let's say, the biggest rainfall in the same area of the, you know, or I'm sure it's not that, you know, but is there some tendency for if, if rainfall, it tends, the rainfall tends to be higher on the, at the, you know, edge, one edge of the, of the, of the flow district than, than another, and that happens in almost, in most storms as opposed to all random?
Yes. Exactly. Rain is unevenly distributed across the watershed. We see really high rainfall on the slopes of Sonoma Mountain compared to out on the lowlands of the west side, on Liberty Valley, considerably less rain event, even during that 100-year event. One of the things to consider is this model, when we talk about the 100-year rain event, the 100-year rain event is an estimate. It is not take, it is not a copy of a specific storm. Some jurisdictions, some areas, they will select a particular storm. They say that, you know, say New Year's 98 storm. Okay, that's the storm we're going to model. That's not what the city has done historically. And it's not, it's not what we selected in this process. The, the rain event is something of a synthetic rain event. It's an average of those, not just those biggest rain events we've seen, but it's the result of a statistical process based on rain gauges around the city. And we also in this process expanded the rain gauges to be outside the city to really get a good distribution of, on average, over decades of rain data. Where does the rain, where does, where does it fall? And in what intensity does it fall?
I can jump in on this if you want, Sebastian.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, for calibration events, of course, we're looking at actually where it fell. And so it does, you're right, that it does kind of tend to fall in different areas for the different events. So for the 100-year event, as Sebastian was saying, it's hypothetical. And so we, we looked hard at, at the best way to classify that across the watershed. And what we ended up with is a, a method that is used by many others, which considers just the mean annual precip distribution. And so we looked at average annual rainfall distribution and we distributed the 100-year according to that pattern. And by the way, that is what the Corps of Engineers did when they designed the flood wall.
Other questions? Council, Vice Mayor Schrebs?
First, hopefully an easy one. You mentioned LiDAR was, has been used. So I thought if I, when, what data year was, was it used in? Which facility did you use, planes, drones, or whatever to use on that? And the quality of that, how recent it is? And not only since we've used it for the elevation changes and everything, I know LiDAR could also be used for many other things. So how recent is it? How was it done? And can it be used for other things other than this flood? Can we use the same data for urban canopy? And also looking at houses and impermeable surfaces? Can we use it in other ways since we have data like that?
Yeah, I can answer that one if you want. Yeah, we're using the county's 2014 LiDAR dataset that's on their VegMap website. And yeah, we usually use bare earth topography for hydrology and hydraulics, which removes things like houses and structures and utility poles and those. The idea is to get the ground surface, removes vegetation as well, or it intends to. So that is the product that we're using. Yeah, and I believe there are a lot of good products also for identifying impervious surfaces, but they're not necessarily tied to the LiDAR. It would be a different data product, but those do exist.
Okay, because you, you mentioned about impermeable surfaces being important. I was wondering how much of that and our possible future growth got included in the model?
Yeah, it's actually a little bit surprising that the impervious surfaces in the city at least don't have a huge implication on the flows. It's kind of counterintuitive because we think, you know, more concrete is bad and it, it increases the peak. But because the watershed's so big and we have so much from the upper watershed and surrounding areas outside the city boundary, the actual percent impervious within the city isn't a huge factor. And we've studied this multiple times for the city and we keep coming to the same conclusion. But there might be a case for a smaller scale development where it does look like a bigger factor and, and it does need to be addressed. But in terms of the petaluma river and flooding along the river, it's not as big of an issue.
Okay, that was quite different from what the Army Corps of Engineers said earlier a few years ago. They said absolutely no more building because it might affect us. So.
And in the upper watershed, that, that's definitely true. But yeah, the, the models we've run, we've turned that knob and it really doesn't matter. Because, and part of the reason is because it's already so impervious. So to go more impervious, say from 90% to 94%, we, we don't see a big or any significant impact in the flows.
And the way to logically think through that is this 100-year rain event is inches of water. In parts of the city, it's six inches. In parts of the watershed, it's, I believe it's upwards of 10 inches. Even a park, even farmland, once you hit a certain amount of inches, that soil has absorbed everything it can and it starts running off. You know, you've seen even in the park, you get the standing water in those really big rain events. So in small rain events, the difference between grass and impervious cover or native vegetation and concrete, very significant. Lot of issues with impervious cover around stormwater quality, groundwater recharge, sediment, you know, run, localized flooding, like your neighbor's driveway going into your basement. There's definitely issues. When we're talking about the 100-year flood event, it's, the model is not as sensitive to that change, particularly within the city. To ask, to answer your question about what the model considers, it considers the current buildout of the city. And Dave will jump in, but I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, it's the 2014 LiDAR data also provided the impervious cover. How many built, how much roof area, how much concrete, how much parking is in the city and in the watershed? So that's based on the current buildout of the city. It's not, so it's, it's not looking at me adding an ADU at my house up, up off Skillman Road. That's not considered into the flood model currently.
Very good. And one of the flood models I've, I've seen recently in the last couple of years is called Risk Factor. I was wondering if that's one of the models that you're using or is even being considered as, as a useful model?
Yeah, we explored Flood Factor early on. Dave will fill in any areas I'm missing. A couple, it's got some interesting uses. It's a national tool and that means it's using national data sets, which means it didn't do the process of evaluating our local rain gauge data and the distribution of rainfall within our watershed, right? It's using a national dataset. And it doesn't have access to data that we have in terms of, it doesn't know how our flood basins work or that we have a flood wall. It doesn't know about how the weir works. It doesn't understand the amount of vegetation in our creeks. And it doesn't have things like surveys of the bridges because it turns out water getting pinched by a bridge starts really having an effect on how much the river can handle. So because it doesn't have that, that local data, it wasn't as reliable of a tool as this process. It's also, we want what we're making, we want these products to be, if not using the same words as a FEMA map, using the same language. We want to have some cross compatibility because we also want to show that we're doing, we're not just meeting FEMA standards. We're going in excess of that to make sure we're not missing any areas and, and failing to protect areas and failing to understand the risk of certain areas. So sticking with a process that's closer to kind of industry standard hydrology was decided.
Good. Then on the, I know I've worked with the county, actually done some creek work with them and been out there and so far our county and our city are actually doing a pretty good job of maintaining our creeks and flows. Does the, is, is there any consideration if, if those, if our creeks, especially the straight ones on the east side, were not maintained as well? Or if there's something went wrong and we weren't maintaining them as well in the future? Is that going to have, would that have a big impact or not on, on the, on the expectations?
Dave?
Yeah, it, it would have a big impact. The, the vegetation levels in the creeks are very important to avoid flooding on the creeks. And, and that's one of the changes we, we made to the model recently was to make sure that the vegetation levels are portrayed correctly in the model. And so if we don't like the flooding on the maps, one thing that can be done is to go in and, and reduce that vegetation. And, and it would reduce, reduce the flooding.
Okay, because that means we have to do good management of our creeks from here on out as, as an absolute necessity then. Otherwise we're in trouble.
I agree.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. Okay, then on, another one that a little harder for me to, to get a hold of is I've gone to listen to seminars from the United Kingdom and they're very concerned about sea level rise for all the islands around the world that they are managing. And their studies were saying that the sea level rise is not uniform around the world. Some areas are much less and some areas are much more by quite a lot. And that some of their places are more heavily impacted and there's a higher impacts in certain locations than others. And also from the IPCC is saying, saying three-foot rise is not just a low probability of 17%. Basically is saying it's a high probability now if we don't change. And you're saying the model says we don't change. So I have a hard time relating to, you're saying that the 3.4 foot is only a 17% when my reading of the IPC and current, and folks saying if we don't change, it's going to be at least three and possibly six now. I was wondering if, how consistent are we with the IPCC and their data of saying only 3.4 feet and 17%?
So firstly, on the distribution of sea level rise around the world, absolutely. It is very site-specific. We do a lot of east coast projects as well and they, the projections are significantly lower on our projects in North South Carolina than they are here. The data source for the sea level predictions is the California Ocean Protection Council document from 2018. It has estimates all along the coast. And the, the one for the Bay Area is based on tide gauge data from San Francisco. So it's localized to our, to our drainage system. In terms of the percentage predictions, the OPC process used, one of the sources is the IPCC, Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. The, but there is a, there's an intermediary process there. Where how do you take that data and how do you downscale it from a global dataset, global modeling, down to something that's- down to something that's relevant and usable at the local level? And that's what the OPC process, the Ocean Protection Council process really was, was being informed by that and then being able to provide something close enough to us as San Francisco to provide relevant numbers and relevant statistics of likelihood. The other thing that's convenient about this model is it's a faster process to to update, to to run it. Now that you have the model, you can run it again with different variables and it's not quite so so burdensome. And so what that lets us do is as new data comes in, as a new guidance document comes in that says, oh, the 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 recommended likelihood sea level rise is now not 3.4, it's 3.6, or whatever the number is, we're able to then update the maps with that process. The OPC 2018 was scheduled to be updated in the summer of 2023. They're a little bit behind schedule. It is actually surprisingly expected to come out this week finally. And what we're seeing this is th- this is an iterative process. As we get better data, you can update the models and you can do that on a faster cycle than than going through a full FEMA process because we are, we are one level above FEMA, right? FEMA does not consider sea level rise, so we're going above that. That was one, that that uncertainty in the models is one of the reasons why for mid century, where we're only 25 years out, the very low probability event was selected. We don't, that that buys us some extra safety factor that the estimates that come out later this year might be slightly worse. And I think the other factor to consider is that these products will be updated over the years as particularly for that end of century. As we get better data, you can you can modify the assumptions of the model and and output another map. Still with time for adaptation for the end of century. But for that, you're right, that was one of the reasons why for middle of the century, we only selected the 0.5 chance probability sea level rise, a rather significant amount of sea level rise to happen by the middle of the century.
Thank you. I think that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilman Kater Thompson?
Thank you. I want to go back to bridges, like existing bridges. So you determined with sea level ri- rise, have you determined how much more flooding would happen? And is it because of the height of the bridge? Or the structure below collecting debris or combination?
The the bridge data that's entered in the model is is just for more accurate hydraulics. And honestly, the the area, the immediate vicinity of the bridge is probably the area that's impacted by the bridge peers and and abutments, you know, that's squeezing the flow or whatnot. It'll be, you know, a little bit higher upstream. But sea level rise is kind of a whole nother animal in terms of, you know, the impacts that you'll see. I I could probably say like the bridges have zero effect on what you see based on sea level rise. It's really, it's because it's really just the calm water moving. It's not hydraulics like with velocity, that's what drives changes at bridges. But when it's just, you know, the tide coming up, yeah, it the bridges have have little impact. I don't know if that answers your question.
Not completely. And this is the specific example is at the Corona Road on the west side of the Corona Overcrossing, there was a bridge built in 1973 or four when they re-struck, reconfigured the roadway and it's and it floods there today. And it's low. And so I know that they've gone and they've taken vegetation out, but it's still very low. And so there, if there is sea level rise, would there be more flooding?
That's a great question, and I think we'll see on the maps that that's upstream of the impact area of the sea level rise. It's pretty much the vicinity of the constriction weir. You don't see much of an effect further upstream than that. Maybe the mall, but.
We'll be, we can look at that on the maps. The the bridges were surveyed as a part of this process to understand how much do they constrict the flow of the river? That's included in the model, so that's really well detailed. And then the maps will output the the results of what's the expected flood in those areas? We expect to see flood because we've seen it on our commutes. And then how is it affected by sea level rise? Does it get worse as sea level rises? We'll be looking at that on the maps.
Okay, because, I mean, will you look at the, what a bridge back in the seventies was was built? What would you build today? That's what I'd like to know.
I think one of our planners might best respond to this, but the the basic answer is that those are the sorts of projects and issues and challenges that we'll be addressing with our with our planning update and with our CIP projects that are, you know, looking at problem areas that we discover through these new mapping tools.
You know, how, I know what the flooding is in the last year, years. And so it's really about sea level rise and and looking at how how you would build a bridge today.
Again, I think sea level rise isn't playing a part in that far upstream. However, climate change and precipitation changes, intensities, et cetera, will play a factor in that, to be sure.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember now?
Um, thank you. And going off of Councilmember Kater Thompson's question about the mapping, if you go to map, I think it was 19, it'll show the river and it'll it'll show the creeks. Can you, can you go back to that so I can? There are some, there are some things that look like bridges, but I wasn't sure if they were weirs because we did put some in place that did shift the water off of the Peyran neighborhood upstream. It was slide, I guess, 19. The mapping, the mapping update, it says 19 down in the corner. There we go. See this, this blue, there, that's the river, correct? Are those the weirs? Where is the weir?
It's in Scholinger.
So do you see the little knob in the upper?
Do you see the knob in the upper left of the map, the where the river knobs out? That's the turning basin?
Yes.
So the weir is.
Farther up north?
Yes.
Okay.
It's off the map.
So what are these, these, are they bridges?
No.
What are those?
Those are, Dave, help me with the.
The nodes in the river.
Yeah, the river nodes that you've got along here. They're in.
Yeah, I can help you with that. So I believe that those little blips you see, those are actually where inflows come in from subbasins. We apply them in the river and just as a modeling exercise. So remember all those 154 subbasins I showed on the previous graphic? I believe that's where those inflow in, so you kind of ignore those. The the blue, really what I was doing here is just giving you a snapshot of kind of what the model looks like. But the maps will be a much better view when we get to that of the actual flooding.
Yeah, here's.
Well, the other reason I bring it up is because Lakeville floods. And I know there are storm drains that sometimes get clogged up. If they, if they get too much debris, that it pushes the water into the businesses along Lakeville. And I always joke with my old time friends and say, Lakeville's not called Dryville. It's always flooded and it used to be really bad, but we had things put in place to protect the Lakeville Highway businesses like Misselli and some of those other businesses and homes that are on that east side circle, east side, is that what it's called?
East Court.
East Court, thank you. Because it flooded two years ago, la- yeah, last year. In 2022, I believe it flooded that neighborhood, Misselli's and some of those other businesses along Lakeville. And it was due to debris and it's just everything hitting at the same time in a 24 hour period.
Is that an area protected by a flap gate?
Yes.
Is that a flap gate?
Yeah, so that'd be, you know, the tide that the flap gate prevents the tide from going in, but the flap gate opens to allow drainage to come out. So if you get debris clogged up in there, you can have that kind of flooding.
And then a- as we are looking ahead into the future for traffic, we're thinking about putting a Caulfield Bridge in there and that's going to really affect the river and the water flow, which is parallel to to Lakeville. So I I'm just thinking ahead how we're going to do preventative maintenance and what we need to put in place and.
Yeah, I can speak to a bit of what you're grappling with, particularly with regard to the proposed Caulfield Bridge, the southern crossing, if you will. And we are already doing extensive modeling for the bridge. And we have shared with them all of our sea level rise mapping. They're incorporating that in the design. And they are in the process of doing preliminary design work to find the best configuration for the foundational pieces of that bridge that are in the river so that they do not raise the water level or impede the flow. That's exactly, it's like first order of business in that design. So you'll, council will see more on that when when we bring that item to you for probably for an informational presentation at some point. And we'll be sharing some of the work that they're doing on that.
Thank you. Also, if I couldn't request an acronym chart, trying to write down these words that all these letters stand for. And I don't, I'm not a scientist and I'm not an engineer. So I would be really grateful in the future if before we get to see more of this, but thank you.
Understood.
Thank you. A couple of follow ups, I guess. One, the 2023 OPC, do you expect it to be more conservative than the mapping you're showing currently? So all future data will be a little bit worse than what we're seeing today?
That's what we're expecting.
Thanks, that's important to know, see it coming. Then following up on the bridges, culverts, pipes question, we show flooding upstream of a variety of things, the Corona Bridge, other places. Will will this effort go into, have you looked at what the benefits are, the reductions in flooding are to bridge improvements or culvert improvements? Even if it's just on the majors, because even North Boulevard is an impediment to flow at high. Is North Boulevard a good weir restraining downtown flooding? Or is removal and heightening of it strictly a good thing? And and that's across the basin, have you looked at all the major manmade impediments to flow?
We haven't studied them for improvements yet. We haven't done that exploration. That's the next shoe to drop.
Okay, and if if and when you do that and there is a bridge that needs replacing, would it be the intention of this process, the general plan would try and figure out a way to fund it or prioritize it for capital effort? I mean, is that, is that where this is all going? Built infrastructure?
Not quite in that order, but yes. The 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 recommendation is that is that we develop a a flood adaptation plan that that will be coming out, I believe, of general plan recommendations. And that effort will do the job of prioritizing and identifying projects for, you know, for short, near, mid, long term planning and prioritizing, looking at funding sources, look, you know, that sort of thing. And and that will will use these maps as its basic tool.
Thank you. The currently in the general plan, I think we require development to do terracing as a river improvement. And then is that right how we would, that's how we would mitigate along, development along the river currently?
Dave or Pam, do you want to help me with that one?
Because my follow up question is, do we anticipate that'll still be the type of thing we do? Or are we moving towards a different way of?
I think it's one arrow in the quiver, if I may, but but a more specific response. A more specific response, Dave?
Yeah, I could just say that I know that we've done a lot of modeling for the city to understand the benefits of terracing and detention. And we we do understand that there are areas where terracing really helps. It'll really lower the water surface elevation in that immediate vicinity. And there are also areas that maybe terracing should be avoided because it will tend to push more flow down to downtown. And so we we have a pretty good idea and these models are just great for understanding the benefits of terracing. I mean, in general, the detention in the upper basin is recommended and that's been recommended for many years, going back to early models in the city. That that's the best way to reduce flooding. But terracing is another one and it's been highly effective upstream at Corona Road.
Yeah, thanks. My bias, not that all informed, is that terracing is kind of hard on the environment and maybe we'd be looking at alternative methods of achieving similar. Hopefully that's, well, I don't know if it's in this range or in the next step, but. And then you, all of this, is this cutting edge or is it becoming normative now? Is that the same thing?
It's all you, Sebastian.
I'll let Dave speak to the model process. In terms of the the using sea level rise to inform, using multiple sea level rise maps to inform near term, long term planning efforts in general plan, we're seeing this, we're on many of the projects. I would, honestly, we don't see that many cities that are very far ahead of us regionally. San Rafael is maybe one step ahead of us in terms of they did this process. And they're now on the, what we would call a flood adaptation master plan that says, now that we know what the future floods look like, what infrastructure do we have to plan for and start planning funding for? They're doing that now, so they are maybe a couple of years ahead of us. But just just the nature of using a forward facing flood map, that that is still pretty new for for jurisdictions. It's, I couldn't say what percentage, but we're pretty.
Layered the way we have?
Compound flood events with sea level rise. Yes, yeah, we're not out on the bleeding edge, but we're also not, there's not that many people ahead of us, which can be challenging from from the perspective of getting precedence, guidance documents and all that. But there are a couple of people ahead of us.
Yeah, okay, good, good answer, thanks. You mentioned the impervious cover aspect and how it's not impactful within city limits and and the existing condition. Would the opposite be true, that remedies that reduce impact, impervious surfaces aren't substantially a flood benefit?
Dave, if you could speak to flood benefit, I'll jump in after you.
Or is that an adaptation and mitigation question?
I think the answer is is you're correct that, you know, reducing the impervious surface isn't really going to take that big of a chunk out of the the flooding problem. It just because, you know, the the saturation of the upper watershed especially, like we saw in the New Year's Storm, it was rain on super saturated soil and it just came down. And this was in 2005 and caused a lot of flooding in the upper or upper part of the city. But yeah, reducing, the the percent impervious just isn't that big of a deal for the rest of the city, the the lower part. I just haven't seen much of an effect, looking at different build out scenarios with assumptions of fully impervious. It barely barely makes a dent in the the flow peak.
And that's looking at the hundred year flood event.
Correct.
We want to also reiterate that as a planning tool, we look at the hundred year flood event, right? That 1% chance. But, you know, community is affected by smaller rain events and affected by smaller floods. This model is intended for the large scale events in the large water bodies. What it doesn't consider is a little localized event like a downspout that's pointing towards. What it doesn't consider is a little localized event, like a downspout that's pointing towards your driveway. It's not considering nuances like, is that storm drain a four inch pipe? When it really needs to be a six inch pipe and it kind of backs up? Or is it clogged with leaves? The model doesn't consider those small, little localized flood concerns. And in those small events, impervious cover does start making a difference. If the entire property is paved and even in one inch of rain, well, now that water is running off, whereas had it been vegetation or soil, a lot of that was going to stay put. So impervious cover is really important for preventing, reducing impervious cover is really important for the little localized flooding, what happens right there on your corner or what happens around the building. But in terms of at the city scale and at these 100 year flood events, it doesn't seem to be that significant. I will always put the, I just always want to reiterate that we're not saying impervious cover is not a problem to the city. It causes a lot of issues. And our stormwater codes try and address those issues.
That's my follow up question. Doesn't the state, well, the regional water board have strong regulation regulation in place for any new development? That it not have an impact, you know, at the lesser storm levels until you get, you know, so that at 100 year, no matter what you do on property, the new development in and of itself doesn't add to the smaller events or doesn't add to larger events because it's already a saturated condition? Is that what the storm water board is trying to do? State Water Resource Control Board is trying to do?
Most of the regulations around stormwater management in a development are focused on water quality impacts, which concern themselves with the small rain events. Those small frequent storms that rush, that wash debris, sediment, pollutants into our waterways. Those design, those regulations are really built around those small events. And so they do various, they do take seriously, how much impervious cover are you making? Because it has a big impact on the runoff water quality. Those regulations in our area are not significantly structured around the impact of runoff during these massive 100 year rain events. Other ordinances are intended to cover those concerns, like net zero fill standards.
The appreciate the 100 year 1% storm. How often in the last 10 years or 20 years have we had a 100 year event?
Dave?
I I don't think we've had one. I think the 2005 event was closer to a 50 year, but it depends on where you were in the city. It's, that's the most difficult thing is it depends. It depends on what you're looking at, 100 year rainfall, 100 year flow. But yeah, it's very, it's very challenging to to make those kind of statements about what what event a certain thing was. But a lot of times, it's easiest to look at the rainfall and understand what depth the rainfall fell and compare that to the 100 year rainfall depth and do it that way. But again, you know, you need gauges, you need the data to be able to make those determinations.
If I remember correctly, there was a portion of Sonoma Mountain.
If I remember correctly, there was a portion of Sonoma Mountain in the October 2022 storm that did basically register as the rainfall depth of the 100 year. But that wasn't the entirety of the watershed. Because again, every storm is a little bit different. That one happened to hit Sonoma Mountain particularly hard, but it didn't really, it wasn't that big of a storm for the city or the rest of the watershed. And so we didn't see this, you know, FEMA level flood conditions.
Thank you. Councilmember Kate Thompson?
Just quick, but on the mapping, where all the creeks come into the river? We keep leaving Deer Creek out of the mapping, and it is a real creek. The bridges were put at the Deer Creek Center because the agencies made them put them in because it's a creek. So I would really like to see that marked for now on.
Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, appreciate the comments about impervious surfaces not being an issue inside of the city. Is that to say that, just trying to connect the dots between our urban growth boundary renewal that's coming up in November, hopefully? Is there a case to be made for renewing the urban growth boundary as a flood mitigation strategy?
Yeah. That's an interesting question and not one that I had fielded or thought through. Would anyone from our planning team be interested in fielding that question?
Okay. As you can see, it's all all hands on deck. And so to the question about urban growth boundary and how it relates to flood mitigation and storm resiliency, short answer, I do believe it's, I do believe, you know, whenever we're talking about how we're redeveloping or forming where development patterns occur in the city. And, you know, in that sense, I think it's it's a strategy. Our former planning director also mentioned, as I was coming up, if we are able to assemble enough parcels, that could also be a way to mitigate as well.
And and Sebastian had the point that we can test it now. So we could play with with that, with in the model and test different, different versions.
Yeah, I would say I'm not looking for, I don't think we need to change our UGB. I just am thinking of ways to make the case to the public that we should renew it, so.
I think one of the powers of this model is it lets you rather quickly iterate and explore what would changing that bridge do? Would it make things better or worse? It would also let you explore certain areas to say, okay, if this area densifies, you can you can simulate that, and you can see what effect does that have on flood velocities on the flood plain? And maybe that's an area that you would pair development with some retention project. Or certain areas, certain creeks in our watershed are really not contributors to those peak flood events. Maybe they, their water gets flushed out to the ocean early in the storm, and it's all, it's already gone by the time the big rain hits. So that might be an area where intensification or increased runoff during the 100 year event doesn't bear a burden of needing to then do a flood mitigation. And the model lets us play around with those things pretty, pretty efficiently.
And by density, you don't mean, you mean the impervious ratio of a property, not the number of stories in a building and number of units on a parcel. You're talking about the ratio of.
So, yeah, that's civil engineering version of intensification for us means how much of the property is paved.
Perfect. Vice Mayor?
Okay, having served in groundwater and watershed and water reuse now, which is recycling, on all three of those committees I've participated in, there's been a lot more discussion. In the future, what we need is what happens, because the modeling is all about above ground. But the discussion now is what's going to happen below ground? And so the the concerns would be that the the sea level rise is more saltwater coming upriver and contamination of wells from that saltwater, as well as the corrosion on pipes that might happen. And also an increase in groundwater height locally in the downtown type area, the lower lying areas, and the amount of water pressure on the infrastructure, whether it be basements, whether it be pipes, whatever you have. And so that's a whole area that we don't understand, that everyone's going, oh, we really don't have much information, not much data, and it's like we're just kind of winging it as far as theory goes. So how much consideration is there in this model? Is, from your perspective, your knowledge, is there concerns about the underground part? The salt and the water pressure and the rise in groundwater height in our local areas? Are those factors that are part of this model in discussion and write up and report? Or are those we just, we just don't know?
Yeah, this model, this tool is not, it's not the tool you would use for understanding groundwater elevations and the interaction between rainwater and groundwater. That's a different, different software, different acronyms that this does not go into. We've been, this process has been sharing information with Sonoma Water Agency. And then particularly in so much as this is the same type of software that the Flood Control District is using for their flood modeling of the upper watershed. And then also through the Water Agency collaboration with the GSA process, because rising groundwater levels or changes to ground. The Groundwater Sustainability Agency here in Petaluma, part of the purview there is changes to groundwater elevation. Does it go up? Does it go down? Both can have impacts. And then also saline intrusion, which is a current problem, a known current problem in the Sonoma Valley, and is under study in, at what time, at what level of sea level rise do you start seeing impacts into Petaluma of that? As the saltwater is moving up, the groundwater gets saltier. That's not what this model is intended for. And but that is under study as one of the key six components of a groundwater sustainability plan that the Petaluma GSA is developing.
Thank you. Okay, oh, we have another question.
Sorry, just a quick question on as far as the weir. When you're talking about development upstream, how much impact will that impervial surface be for downstream flooding if it's closest to the weir?
So one of the things we did in this process was a stress test of, we experimented, if you take the amount of impervious cover that's in the city and you just theoretically increase it significantly. And and we went rather, rather egregious in an amount of extra concrete that, you know, by is well in excess of any growth plan and and ignores all standards for stormwater control, right? We we wanted to stress test, and we went really aggressive. And we added a lot of impervious cover to the city. And that did not have a significant, really a noticeable impact in the elevation of the flood through the city. That did not experiment with loss of flood storage, which is different. Those areas on the map that show blue as a flood plain, that is holding water during the flood event. And if you put dirt or concrete or a building in that spot, the water's got to go somewhere. It's, it might be going down, it might be going somewhere else, or it might be going downstream faster. That, the model was not tested to be sensitive to, it was not explored if the model was very sensitive to changes to storage. It was built on what is, what is built out in the upper watershed right now. I think that is another area that the model lets us explore is, again, what areas were they to be developed, start having significant impacts?
I think we may know a few areas, so it would be nice if those were included so we could find out.
Mayor, we still have a lot of slides to go.
I was going to say, we should toss it back to you guys here real quick. Thanks.
Okay. Is that where we were? No, we're at 34. Find it. Oh, you were right. Okay, I'm going to take the calm back here and introduce you to, many of you, to a map that you're familiar with. This is our current FEMA FIRM, F I R M. That's another acronym for Flood Insurance Rate Map. The FEMA maps that we have are all flood insurance rate maps. That's what they are. That's their purpose in life. And this is our FEMA FIRM map for the 1% chance rain event, which we often refer to as the 100 year storm event. And I just wanted to pull it up for a reference, because now what I'm going to be showing you are our new maps on this same terrain for comparison sake. And if you want, we can flip back and forth. I think I can figure that out. So there are four maps that I'm going to, I'm sorry, there's six maps I'm going to be introducing you to next. And I'm, I'm going to just highlight some key features of the maps as we go. I believe there was a question, comment about finding higher resolution maps to explore the, we do have higher resolution maps online at the General Plan Update website. And the the ones that you, you know, found in the PDF that was attached to the staff report will be a little limited in resolution, I'm afraid. And so I'm going to go to our first map. And I'm going to hearken back to the scenarios that Sebastian walked us through. This is the first of the mid century maps. This includes rain and storm surge, does not include king tide. That's the next map. So this is rain, this is the the 1% rain or the 100 year storm with storm surge. That combination is the FEMA combination, essentially. And to that, we've added the low probability of a mid century sea level rise of 1.9 feet. And the, I'm going to, the, these first maps I'm running through show the, essentially the entire city limits. And the next set of maps after these will be a zoom in of each of these maps. So we can, we can see a little bit closer what's going on. But you can see from this that, let's see here. I guess I want to remind you first that the combined areas of storm surge and rainfall flooding, though they're shown on one map, they can't statistically happen on the same day, but they have the same 1% chance of happening. That's a tough one to get your mind around, but I'm going to keep repeating that. The city outline is shown in orange here and called it out. Can, is my cursor picking up? I can't tell. Okay. So city limit is here, and here's the line you can kind of see coming around. If you can follow my error, my arrow comes down here, Scholmberger around, crosses 101, et cetera. So that's our city limits in orange. Major roads are in black, and these colors and this legend are the same throughout all the maps you'll be looking at. The downtown area is, where's my turning basin? Here we go. So I, I always, when I look at our city maps, I look for that little knob in the river as the, which is the turning basin, and it's a really good marker for the downtown area. So here's our downtown area here. And 101 at Redwood Highway, another one of our traditional flooding areas is up here. This area here, where you see a lot of flooded area, this is in our watershed west of town. This is outside of city limits, all of this. And I'm just going to use my cursor, and I'm going to track down the river here for you. So I'm coming down. This is all, this is our river. Here's downtown. Here's McNear Peninsula. Now I'm crossing 101 at Lakeville. Is that true? No, I'm crossing 101 at Petaluma Boulevard here. The river's crossing here. Here's the Lakeville crossing here. And then we head south past the Marina and Sheridan and on to Scholmberger out here. So the Scholmberger facility is here. You can see some of the treatment ponds here with a little inundation. Again, this is mid century, very low probability. Yeah. And anything else I'm missing that I should be talking about? Oh, the colors. Thank you. So flooding is shown by shading in the map from shallow, the shallowest flooding is in yellow to the deepest flooding, which is in dark blue and green. Yellow shaded areas are less than half a foot of flooding. So six inches or less of flooding is yellow. The next color in is salmon. That's one, up to one foot, so that's six inches to a foot deep of flooding. And then from light blue to dark blue, we go from two foot all the way to five foot of flooding. And anything deeper than five feet, we show in that green teal color that's in the bottom of the legend here. And 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 so I'm just going to point out, you do see that deep teal here, but of course, that's, that's in the floodway. That's, that's the river. So this is our rain and storm surge. And notice we're seeing, you know, there's, there's definitely flooded areas up here, you know, north of, north of Peyran, north of the weir. We see impacts here from flooding. You'll notice when we move to the King Tide map that we're, and we take the 100 year storm out, we take the rain out, and we're just looking at tidal influence. We're not seeing much, anything up there. seeing much anything up there. So I'm going to go ahead and flip over. Did I catch everything on that map, Sebastian?
Why we're allowed to zoom.
What's that? Why we're allowed to zoom? Go ahead.
Yeah. I think the most important thing that this map is telling us is that with 1.9 feet of sea level rise, the only changes to what areas flood, so going from now and adding 1.9 feet of sea level rise, the only really areas that change during that 100-year rain are from the bottom of the city up to about Washington Street Bridge. Upriver from there, so Peyran Bridge, Lakeville Bridge, up to the weir, up to Corona, all of that upstream is not affected by that amount of sea level rise. It's just too far up the river to really have any impact. And so what that lets us do is later on, we'll be able to zoom in and really just zoom in on the area that sea level rise affects the city. Because at some point, when you go up uphill, it stops mattering how, how high the river is. So I think now we'll switch over to the king tide.
So now we're still at mid-century with this map. Again, very low probability, 1 foot, 1.9 foot of sea level rise. And now we've layered that with the king tide. And the king tide, I'm going to reiterate, is something we know happens. It's, it's not something that has an unknown probability. It has a 100% chance of happening a few times every year. And so it's important that we consider it. And, and hence why you see this condition, this scenario, if you will, in, in all of our maps. And again, this is exactly the same extent, extents on the map that you're seeing with the city limit shown. Up here is old red at 101. Down here is the turning basin and downtown. Here's the Lakeville Crossing. And then here's the lower river area with Scholinger being here. And, and of course, I'm going to flip back just so you can get a quick visual comparison to this same sea level rise with rain and storm surge versus king tide. So it, so it's, it's dramatic. And it's because this is entirely tidal on, on this map.
Can you flip it back again?
You bet.
Yeah, a way to think about this is if there is 1.9 feet of sea level rise, this map has a 1% chance of happening in each year, once you hit that amount of sea level rise. Whereas if we go to the king tide map, if we have 1.9 feet of sea level rise, whenever that happens, this map happens two to three times a year guaranteed because the king tides happen two to three times a year. A thing to remember as we're looking at all these maps, though, is this is assuming the city does nothing, right? This is assuming there are no flood protections. This is assuming there are no stormwater pump stations. This assumes no changes are made. So one factor to also consider is that this is not a, this is not a guarantee. It's a prediction of if we have 1.9 feet of sea level rise, what might happen.
So again, very conservative assumptions. We assume no mitigations, no adaptations, no nothing. Very much a worst case.
Gina, I also wanted to reiterate that this, this map, this king tide map, it's basically like filling up a bathtub. And so it's showing like ponds in the treatment plant being flooded, but that's because we're not modeling the berms. We're just allowing it to fill up. If it's at that elevation, it's showing up wet.
Okay. So that doesn't have the berms modeled at Ellis?
Correct. Yeah, we're just assuming the water can get through any barrier and it's filling up and showing you what that elevation represents.
Thank you for that. Yep. Okay. So I'm going to move to the next set of maps. This is the end of century scenario with sea level rise at 3.4 feet. This is a low probability for the end of century. And this is sea level rise on top of the 100-year storm and storm surge. And if you like, I can, if it's helpful, I could, actually, I don't know if it'd be helpful to flip back on this one. I don't think I will. This again assumes global greenhouse gas emissions that don't go down and that we do nothing to prepare for the floods. So again, very conservative assumptions. And like the previous maps, flooding is shown by the shading from shallow and yellow, the deep in dark blue and green. And this map showed us more flooded areas. And most importantly, taught us that 3.4 feet of sea level rise only changes the flood model from the bottom end of the city up to about Peyran Bridge. Upriver from there and up the creeks, this amount of sea level rise will not result in extra flooding during a rainfall event or storm surge. And then the corollary map for end of, oops, for end of century, 3.4 feet with king tide. And as before, with the king tide, we're not seeing any effects upriver. This is all tidal. It's, it is our bathtub effect of, of king tide. We know this would, this would happen a few times a year. When we have our king tides at the end of the century with 3.4 foot of sea level rise, you're starting to see, and we'll see this when I, when we go to the zoomed in maps next, you'll be able to see that there's now some flooding here. You're starting to see it along Petaluma Boulevard and the warehouse district. You're starting to see it off of Peyran and, and around the Peyran or Lakeville 101 area as well. And then I'm going to find my cursor. Where'd I go? Oh, thank you. Okay. And now we're going to take a deep breath and take a look at the scariest of the maps. That's the 6.9 foot sea level rise maps with storm and with king tide. And again, you can imagine the 6.9 sea level rise scenario is going to show a lot more flooding. And before we look at it, I just want to remind everyone of a couple things. First, at the soonest, this is 75 years out, plus or minus, this uses second, the high emissions projection, meaning that global emissions continue to rise for many decades. Says no decrease in global emissions, no impacts for, for any climate change work that's being done today. This has only a 0.5% chance, that's half of 1% chance of happening by the end of the century. It is the most conservative outlier, worst case condition or scenario that the OPC 2018 guidance gives us. This also assumes again, that the city does absolutely nothing to protect from floods. And we all know that's not going to happen. We're working very hard to start addressing this. But if there's no new flood control and no new stormwater management, that's what you, that's, that is what this map is reflecting. So this scenario is so unlikely that it's only appropriate for a few planning efforts, as Sebastian described earlier. It's useful to consider this level of flood for projects that pose high risk to human safety or critical infrastructure like a hospital, evac shelter, power station, fire station, right? So that said, let's flip over and take a look at what these look like. Here we are now, end of century, very low probability of occurring according to OPC at 6.9 feet with 100-year rain and storm surge. And now you're, here's the turning basin. Now it's buried in a flooded area here. Now you're boating around downtown. Come up here, not seeing the same level of impact up in the north, up in the north reach here, up by 101 and Redwood Highway. Seeing a lot of deep water down in the south end of town. The Marina, the Lakeville area, lots of, lots of flooded areas there and pretty deep flooded areas. Again, looking, looking at our legend with the color shadings, that dark blue is four to five feet. And the teal green is deeper than five feet of water. So don't shoot the messenger. Now we're going to look at 6.9 feet with king tide. And again, a lot of impacts. And, and, and I will also remind everyone that when we talk about king tides, we're talking about something that will happen. It's not a guess. The guess is the 6.9 feet, right? We're taking our best shot at that from the guidance we have. But the king tide, we know will happen. And when you put it with that sea level rise, you have significant flooding downtown. You have significant flooding along Lakeville and everywhere south. Are we starting to see a little bit happening with creeks in here?
Yeah.
A little bit happening with creeks up here in the north. What else can I say for, before we leave this slide? Again, a half of 1% chance, so a half percent chance that by the end of the century, we see this inundation during every king tide every year. And we start seeing a lot of impacts here. Even Sebastian's pointed out that even with this amount of sea level rise, king tides are much easier to prepare for and protect against than storms. They are predictable. Go ahead.
Yeah. It's, we don't typically, in Petaluma and, and most jurisdictions, it's not as frequent that we talk about king tides. Petaluma, we're probably ahead of many communities in considering the impacts of king tides. They're not usually used as a, as a flood tool because typically king tides are not really flooding that many people. We've, since they happen every year, people have typically tried to build a bit above them. But in the future, as sea level rise raises those king tides up, it starts becoming a relevant consideration. And that's why we have these two map products. We have the rain and storm maps that are those, you know, emergency situations, 1% chance happening. Those are the, down the hatches, get sandbags, kind of emergency response rain events. The king tides, yes, less areas are flooded. And they're a little bit more manageable from the perspective that there's no, there's probably no rain falling. And so you don't have the concerns around storm drains clogging and pump stations running. But it will happen, right? It doesn't have a 1% chance of happening every year. It's got 100% chance of happening every year. And so they start becoming, particularly as we get into these deeper sea level predictions, it starts becoming a relevant tool to explore what impacts that might have on land uses, what impacts it might have on flood protection. Because you protect against a king tide with different sorts of infrastructure than you protect against rainfall. So having the nuance, having the difference between these maps starts informing some of the engineering and some of the policy.
Yep. So now we're going to move to the zoom map. We're going to zoom in, same maps, same order. I just wanted to give everyone a little bit closer look at the areas that are most impacted in these maps. So the upper limit on the upper left of your screen is now the downtown area here. Because as we saw, and, and obviously, we can zoom in on the whole thing. I just couldn't, we can only do so much in this presentation. But any of you are welcome, and I would encourage you to go in and take a closer look and do a deep dive in the maps online. And you can explore any place in town in depth.
And the reason we're zooming in on these in particular is that sea level rise, again, stops having an impact once you go upstream. So we're, we're able to zoom in here because there's really nothing new that's going to change in these maps up to the left, up, up the river. This map, you stop seeing any changes to the flooding around Washington. The next map around Lakeville and the final map around the weir. So we don't have to show those up right now because nothing's going to change up, up those streams because, because sea level is higher.
Okay. And I'm, so I'm just going to point out some of the landmarks and some of the obvious flooding areas. Notice that we're starting, oops, I didn't mean to do that. My apologies. Again, this is mid-century. This is a low probab, sorry, very low probability, 1.9 foot of sea level rise. This is with rain and storm surge. And, and now zooming in, you kind of get a better idea where some, you can now start seeing a little more detail on where that shallower flooding is. We actually see some here on the west side of town. Here's Kelly and Thompson Creeks feeding, feeding that again from rain. When we go look at the king tide, you're not going to see this. It's because it's not tidal. It's just, it's an effect from, from the storm, from rainstorm. We're seeing some flooding off the east side of Lakeville. We're seeing more flooding south on Lakeville, south of 101, quite a bit more in these areas. This is, is that a Dobie Creek? Dobie Creek coming in here?
Correct.
Thank you. And Ellis Creek is right in here. And city limits are that dotted orange line. And again, the deepest flooding you're seeing here, per this legend, greater than five feet are these deep teal colors. And, and of course, our floodway is reflected in that deep teal. And there's a little bit of overbank. If I could zoom in on this for you like you can online, you'll see that there's a thin blue line showing some overbanking just starting to happen here along, along the river south of town, south of downtown. And now this is that same sea level rise scenario with king tide. And remember how we saw, I mentioned we had some flooding over here that was from Kelly Thompson Creeks. Now we're not seeing that because now the king tide and sea level rise are our only sources of water and those aren't, aren't affected that way. I'm jumping ahead here. Do I need to say anything else about this map?
There was a question earlier about flooding on Lakeville. I think we can, we can look at that here, that on the top left where it says flooded areas. That's where with, with sea level rise, we start seeing during a king tide, which happens a couple times a year, you start seeing flooding in that area. And it's an interesting phenomena of the, of the modeling because you notice there's no yellow or blue connecting that flooded area on Lakeville over to McNear Peninsula or any waterway. That's because for the storm surge and the king tide maps, we're using this bathtub approach that just says if it's below the level of the river, we assume it floods, probably because a storm drain is running backwards and flooding that area. Again, this is helpful because you start looking at those isolated areas. Those are really easy to protect compared to something that's right on the river, right? A flap gate on a storm valve is very different, a flood adaptation than a levee or a flood wall. So looking for those isolated pockets, you'll start seeing those, those little phenomena. That situation might not even happen right now, just given the fact that there are flap gates on some of those storm infrastructure. The model can't know about every little stormwater feature. It can't know about every culvert and every flap valve. So it's conservative and says that area might flood.
And then moving up to the end of century sea level rise scenario, 3.4 feet. This is just a zoom in of a previous map that we looked at, showing fair bit of flooding in south of downtown, really. But here's, here's First Street here, if you can follow my arrow. Here's Second Street here. And here's the Boulevard in this black line here. So we're starting to see some inundation there, a lot more inundation off of Lakeville. Also on the other side of the turning basin, off of Weller, Copeland area there. And then shallower flooding, but more extensive in the south Lakeville areas.
One thing to consider also in these models is is that the model doesn't know the elevation of the building. And so if you were to look over at First Street down in the warehouse district where our office is, it might show that there's a foot of flooding on that parcel. But you guys know from walking down there, a lot of those buildings are up on two-foot, three-foot concrete plinths. So this shouldn't, the map shouldn't be used to deduce an impact to a building without knowing the actual architecture of that building. Particularly in older parts of the town, of our town, a lot of the buildings were built high, just historically, to address floods. So that a parcel is shown as having some floodwater on it should not be immediately thought to mean the building is affected.
Yeah, I do want to clarify that the buildings themselves were modeled. We included the building database. And what we did was we assigned a very high roughness value, which just means it's very unlikely for water to go through the building if it could go around. But if the water is high enough, it will saturate the building and it'll show it is wet. But like Sebastian was saying, could be that there's some infrastructure there that isn't in the model that would protect it.
Thanks. And then here's 3.4 foot of sea level rise at the end of century with king tide. And again, a zoomed in layer. Remember this flooding happening two to three times a year without any rainfall. And most of the flooding above one foot depth, which is the blue, is confined to the roads. Remembering that we chose the sea level rise scenarios that have a low or very low probability of happening again. All of the premises that I've stated on the earlier maps hold for this. This is just a zoomed in area of the 3.4 king tide map that we looked at earlier. So you could see a little bit more of what's going on here. Here's the Marina here. Sheridan, pretty dry still. First Street looks like it's not too happy. Here's D Street Bridge coming through here. And I'm going to go on now, and we're going to see a zoom in of the 6.9 foot sea level rise with storm surge. And this is obviously significant inundation now that you're seeing in the greater midtown and downtown areas and also further north. And we, so this particular map, we changed the extent of the map of the zoom map a little bit because there's a lot more flooding here in the Peyran area now that we weren't seeing on the other maps, all this. It's getting pretty intense. Starting to see some dark blues in there.
That also includes flood wall being there, yeah?
Yeah, what we're, so this map is showing that the flood impacts of a 1% rain event coming down the river, trying to get out when the river's high. And then it's showing a different day of the 1% chance that a storm surge works its way up the river from the bay. They don't happen on the same day. They just have the same chance of happening. So one thing, when you look at this, just like when you look at a FEMA map, is not to say, oh, that, all those blue areas might flood on one day. In an area like Petaluma, you kind of have to split that into the upriver parts and the downriver parts. And what we're seeing is that sea level rise, the main impact is during those storm surge events, which might happen when there's little to no rain. They have that 1% chance of happening. And that's also an important thing the model lets us do is experiment with what type of flooding is this area subject to? Because you protect against a rain flood different than you protect against a storm surge or a king tide flood. You use different techniques. The city historically uses retention of floodwater in the upper watershed as a flood protection strategy. Really, that's the way to address rainfall flooding. The, what these maps say is that as climate change comes, as sea level rises, we also start thinking in addition to those strategies at downstream strategies to protect against the river coming up at you. So it's a bit, it starts meaning we start adding to our toolkit of flood adaptation strategies beyond what we have been using historically.
Yeah, can you elaborate on that? Like you said, the, you know, you gave one specific example of the retention basins, but you didn't give any examples for the downstream tools that we have in our toolbox. And like, as I'm going through and I'm thinking about like the purpose of this, like beyond like turning me into a hydrology expert, right? Like, I'm thinking about the policy implications for what we're looking at tonight. So help me understand what tools are in our toolbox more specifically in, so that I have more like practical application between like the maps and the technical data and things like that. And how this is actually going to be, you know, put in front of me where I have to make a policy decision.
I don't have any slides, but from the engineering perspective, when you're looking at storm surge flooding, coastal flooding, riverine flooding that's coming up at you, you, the, you're not going to retain that in any way within the city. So a lot of the strategies within urban areas resort, go to, sometimes you go as far as gray solutions like levees and flood walls. May they, if they are permanent or temporary, there's a lot of different systems there. In an area like Petaluma, I think what's interesting and is a growing field of study within the Bay Area is looking at what flood benefit our marshes are providing us. We don't have much left, but thankfully, we still have some. And it is providing flood protection to us from storm surge. Like we said earlier, we don't have to worry about waves in downtown Petaluma from flooding. That's because we're pretty far upriver. And the marshes act as a buffer. They slow down wave effects and they slow down swell, and we don't have to worry about it. Well, in the future, what happens to our marshes as sea level rise goes up? Do we, do they start losing their effectiveness? That's some, a big area of study, SFE, San Francisco Estuary Institute is doing a lot of research into that. So there are more green solutions to protecting from storm surge. Is that setback levees, is that marsh enhancement, is that modifications to the river? Some cities in really urban areas resort to tidal gate systems. Think what London is doing or what Boston is doing. It's at a larger scale than what most of us are thinking about. So there are, yeah, there are a suite of systems. Some of it, we explored it somewhat in the sea level rise white paper that came out.
Some catchment to their staff report.
Great.
Okay, hold it.
There's a little bit in there from, particularly from the Urban Land Institute has a fair amount of exploration of those sorts of adaptation strategies.
And councilman, I'll just add, I think this is a culmination of a lot of the great questions that have come across this council today. So everything from a more nature-based solution to, you know, terracing things that we're all aware of, that we've seen, enhancement that, enhancements that we do currently along the river. We are exploring all these options. We'll talk a little bit later on in the presentation around our flood resiliency framework. And so our general plan advisory committee has started to see, you know, some of these different tools that we have in the toolbox that we can start to grapple with, right? This was always meant to be, you know, let's understand the methodology. Let's start to take in the maps to fully understand the problem. And then now, how do we shift that energy to solutions? And so we'll talk a little bit later on about a framework. We're starting to talk to the general plan advisory committee about this. And then there'll have to be a lot more detail with our public and with our community.
So I'm going to quickly switch to the next map. And this is our 6.9 foot sea level rise, very low probability end of century, layered with king tide. And more downstream inundation, getting pretty deep in areas.
That's just more zoomed out.
Yeah. So Brian, you might as well come back and give us your roundup on the general plan. We're going to take us now out of the technical and into the planning world.
Could I have a question before I do that? So with the 6.9 foot low probability end of century assumption, with that, are all the glaciers melted worldwide? Or if we went out another 30 years, we'd be going up even higher?
No, the, no, not all glaciers are melted in that scenario. The all glaciers and all major collapse of Greenland and Antarctic ice shelf systems are, that's kind of either an even more drastic scenario that doesn't have a known probability. It's very kind of cutting-edge science that is explored by the OPC report, but it's not a useful tool because there is no understanding of how likely that is.
So if it did happen, how many feet would we be talking from now?
Well, all, full collapse of Greenland and Antarctic, I mean, those are, the predictions for those are many centuries out, and they're hundreds of feet of sea level rise. They're, it's a different category of, to your question of what's applicable to us, what's provided by OPC. OPC goes out to 2150. And it, so it gives us its probabilities of sea level rise out to 2150. The 0.5% chance in 2150 is around nine feet, I believe. So sea level def, it still continues in that scenario. The charts go past 2100. And that's as far as this very low probability gets on that chart, around nine. The low probability that we use to generate the 3.4 foot, by 2150, I believe that gets up to around six feet. So that's one thing that's usable about these, the maps is you can also consider them as, sea level rise will continue to be this progression, whether it be a fast progression or a slow progression. And we're expecting new data any week now. And that might adjust the map. It doesn't mean throw the map away, though. If this new data comes out and says that 6.9 feet is not the 2100 very low prediction, it's the 2094 low prediction, very low prediction, right? The years might change by some number of years. That doesn't mean this is a useless planning tool. It might mean you expedite some of the planning efforts, you reassign priorities, but you don't necessarily have to throw the map away. That's one of the reasons we're titling these as end of century, mid-century, rather than selecting a year. Because we want, though we always want to have the most updated map, there's also appreciation that decisions need to be made, policy needs to be set. And the slight changes in maps as the climate change data gets honed in don't necessarily spell for major rethinking of the engineering approach or the policy approach. And that's one of the reasons for looking at these really long-term projections to provide more adaptation time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gina. Just next slide. So again, as you can see, every time our staff, when we have internal discussions on this, it can quickly pick up steam and it sort of goes down different rabbit holes. And so many questions seem to come up. And so we just, you know, we talked through methodology. We're hopeful that we've provided a lot of the information to explain how we've come to this point, the method that we selected as staff, as well as a visual. So what happens? We've selected that methodology. And now we have maps that we can use to help visualize and help start our conversations with the community. So up on the screen here, how this all ties in, there's, I'm going to just speak briefly here, six slides on how this effort connects with the general plan process, long-term planning and policy exercise that we're going through as a community at the moment. And so this looks out 15 years, 15 to 20 years out and sets a number of policies related to redevelopment, land use, and how we envision our community in the mid to long term. And then I'll turn it back over to Gina, and she'll talk through a parallel process that is much more near-term, but equally important for us to start to inform not just the council, but the community at large as well. So general plan, we embarked on this as a city right at the outset of the pandemic. So much of the meetings and a lot of the work has been done, you know, in the midst of all that. And so we've been meeting regularly, monthly with our general plan advisory committee. Many of you have attended and have been participants of that committee. And so just to direct your eyes to the blue star. And so we've kicked off, we've done some discovery. We've started to envision as a community where we want to take the general plan update. We've brought in experts, whether it's the Urban Land Institute and other groups to help us think through a visioning. And then we've worked, started to work with our general plan committee on policy development. And so what do we do about development of properties along the river? How should we look at where to site critical public facilities? Whether it's parks, whether it's a fire station? You know, this is our opportunity to really take a holistic approach to that. And with any other, with like, with any other general plan effort, there's a set of alternatives, right? So we've set the base, or we've started to set that base level of understanding here this evening. And so we're understanding in 50 years or up to 75 years, what does our community look like? How much water should we anticipate, whether it's through rain or sea level rise? And so once we understand that, then we can start to think about alternatives. And so that's where we've been working with general plan advisory committee. Next Thursday, we'll start to continue that discussion around land use alternatives. And so as you see here on the slide, we had that intro discussion with the G-PAC September of last year. And so we've started to have additive conversations on top of, you know, this presentation plus the mapping. And so a lot of really great content and a lot of great thought is coming out of the general plan advisory committee. We'll pick that up next Thursday. And then that'll, Gina, just next slide, put us squarely at the end of this month. And so we're working on an administrative draft. I mentioned the flood resiliency policy framework. And so this goes back to councilmember Barnacle's questions about, you know, what are those tools that we have to address and to be more resilient now that we have this information? And then that's going to dovetail perfectly into, you know, different scenarios on how we envision our community to develop over those next 15 to 20 years. And so what we talk about land use alternatives, this is something, we'll come back to the council in March to present in a workshop format and then look to get some direction shortly after in April. And so between now and then, this is essentially more public engagement. It's time for us to, now that we've done the heavy lift, to really understand, you know, what the future of Petaluma will be from an environmental perspective, climate perspective. You know, now we're armed with that information. We can start having that dialogue with the community. So we're having much more focused, neighborhood-based conversations. So we're having much more focused, neighborhood-based conversations around, you know, what we're seeing here in the data. And then looking a little bit further out, once the council here has looked and done a workshop on alternatives, selected a preferred alternative, that essentially gives us a one-year outlook to complete the general plan update. And so that's when we will start the environmental review process. And so all of that culminating summer of 2025 with hopefully consideration by council of a new general plan. Next slide. And with that, I will turn it back over to Gina to talk through FEMA mapping.
Thanks, and I promise we're almost at the end. So our FEMA update process, this is a parallel track to everything that we've been talking about. We've done this, this sea level rise and modeling and flood modeling, updated flood modeling. And part of this next process with the mapping will be to take the flood portion of that modeling, which is right now, currently, and for the foreseeable future, the only part of the mapping that FEMA is using. So FEMA isn't yet taking sea level rise into consideration. I understand that they're working on this, but there isn't, there's no there there yet with FEMA. So they, they are still relying on the traditional rainstorm flood maps. And that was a big part of the modeling update that Wes consultants did for us. And now that we have 100-year and the 500-year 0.2% chance flood scenarios from rain developed, we are poised to start the part of the process to take those to FEMA, to submit, to submit our new models with all of the calculations and all of the backup and all of the data and the assumptions and say, FEMA, we think this is a more accurate and more current map of what our floods look like. And we want you to review these for a map amendment, to update our flood maps to our new model. And FEMA will take some time to review that. And during that time, we'll also be engaging in a lot more public outreach to introduce these to the community, probably area by area. Not, we've done one broad community meeting and there will probably be at least another, but there will also be some smaller meetings so that we can focus in any given area where you have different creeks and the impacts are similar in neighborhoods. And we'll be talking to those folks. So I anticipate several community meetings during this process to start informing the community about what we're doing. All part of this parallel track to take our maps to FEMA and have updated FEMA firm maps. It could be a two-year process, that's not uncommon. Could be a little less, we will try for a little less. But I'm advised that two years is very much within the realm of possibility. And I have one last slide about flood plain management Petaluma. This is all things that we've discussed. It's just a wrap-up slide and I know it's late and I don't want to take any more of your time than we already have unnecessarily. And I will just take you to the very last bullet of that slide, just to remind everyone that these models are intended to help inform our general plan policies. And they're going to provide critical information to help our team and Public Works do our flood management work and develop projects and look at adaptation and mitigations that might be needed over time. And this is an amazing tool that's going to help get us there and inform us. Without it, we're blind and with it, we have something to help us along the way. So is that my last slide? That's my last slide.
Okay.
Questions? Thank you.
Well, thanks for, I mean, thanks for particularly grim news, but I think it's important that we hear it and hear it early. And bringing it back to the council for any questions, council member Kater Thompson?
Just kind of quick, but it's like, I understand the difference between upper reach and the king tides and, you know, and how that works and where the separation is. But if you do have the perfect storm, what is that when there's too much water going into downtown and then it starts backing up to the upper reach? The perfect, you know, because we've had many perfect storms and that's what seems to happen, but downtown hasn't flooded.
I assume by perfect storm, you mean a large rain event happening during a king tide?
A large, yeah, that could be the scenario, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Or even without a king tide.
So those, those rain and storm surge maps you see are the result of two models. And because we don't want to look at too many different maps, we blend them into one. Basically, take the worst of each. What's the worst amount that could flood because of rain? Lots upstream, some downtown, some along, you know, Adobe, definitely there's some. But a greater area of downtown is subject to flooding from the storm surge coming up the river. During a rain event, there is a chance of there being some amount of storm surge coming upriver. That's like a compound event of rainfall during a storm surge event. The statistics of what's the likelihood of how big of a rain happens at the same time of how big of a surge is very complicated. And a lot of, a lot of studies have been done on trying to figure that out, even locally. There was a really extensive study of Los Colinas Creek down in Marin County, trying to figure out what's the likelihood of these two things happening at the same time? Because as you, if you start compounding events of differing probabilities, you no longer have an event that is a one in 100. You very quickly start finding, you're analyzing an event that is one in 200, one in 500, one in 1,000. You start, you lose track of what the probability is. And if you don't know the probability, it's not a useful planning tool. So we have a slide, I could, we could bore you with some title information, but the summary of it is that one of the assumptions that Dave showed early on was how high is, how high is the river during that rain event? Is it low tide? Is it high tide? Is it average tide? It's the, yeah, there's a tide gauge, the NOAA slide, that one, yeah. So where on this?
This one? Oh, no, next one.
Where were we? We were here. We were here. So here's one day, right? You have a high tide, you have a low tide, you have a high tide that's not quite so high, and then you have a low tide that's not quite so high. That's the four, you know, the four tides during any given day. So the question comes, sometimes that high tide is even higher because it's a king tide. Is the storm going to happen at that time? Very unknown probability. And so you don't want to just say, oh, they happen at the same time because all of a sudden, this is a black swan event that just has such a low chance of happening. But you want to build in some extra safety. And so one of the things this model did, which is the same as how the Army Corps did it, which is don't hope that there will be a low tide during the rain event. We're just going to say it stays high tide for the entirety of the rain event. That's a worst-case scenario. And so basically, it means you're pessimistic and you're not going to hope that there's a low tide that lets all the rainwater flow out. What that does is mean you're kind of already considering something of a high tide during the rain event. So it's already built in there. The reason we feel confident in that premise, that let's pretend the tide stays high the whole time. One, it's because it's how the flood models have been done in the past. And two, what this modeling process let us do was explore, one, are our results close to what we've seen in actual stream gauges during storms? Yes, our results are very close to what those really big storms, we've actually measured them to do. And two, some model runs were done at a low tide to see, again, are our results pretty consistent? And the, the final summary of it, I guess, is to say, this assumption that you just keep the high tide continuous the whole 24 hours, it matches very well to how our river actually performs based on measurements. And it is neither excessively conservative. And it's not, it's not optimistic. So it's play it safe, but you can still actually trust the data because it looks like our river when we run the model. So some amount of compound events are actually kind of already built in there.
Thank you.
Council member Healy.
Thank you. So this isn't so much a question, but a follow-up in tying this up to the conversation we had at Zone 2A. So part of the reason I've been quiet tonight is this is the second time I've seen most of these slides. But I did promise a delayed liaison report, and I'm going to do that very briefly here now. The main point of business at the last Zone 2A meeting in December was to approve a recommended budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which we did. But what is alarming and really caught my eye, and I want to share with the council, is that Zone 2A's finances are on a downward trajectory going forward over the next five years. They're burning down, planning to burn down fund balance. They would be able to continue with stream maintenance in the range of a quarter million dollars a year going forward with their existing revenue sources. But the amount of money available for projects will go from the $2 to $3 million range over the next year or two, down to less than $100,000 by year five, and it's not going to get any better than that. And I think one takeaway from what we've seen tonight is that we're going to need projects or we're going to need all kinds of projects that we haven't even started thinking about yet. So Zone 2A used to be supported by a very modest parcel tax throughout the entire zone, which is, includes the unincorporated area. And that was allowed to sunset maybe 10 years ago without even being placed back before the voters. So I think we need to start having a conversation with the county about possibly putting that parcel tax back before the voters because the case is pretty compelling. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I did have two things. One, a little bit of a comment. I really appreciate you mentioning that the king tide is a reliable every-year event and maybe could note that on the actual slide so that when the public is looking at it, they see 100% right, and then the low probability being described as the 1% or whatever. That, I think that would add clarity. And then a longer question about FEMA. So why do we want to tell FEMA we're doing this? As soon as we self-admit that we're in a, that we need to remap, is it typical that this agency would suggest a remapping? Or would FEMA or Corps initiate that? And then once we tell them that, won't there be a local impact of greater insurance rates? Or will there also be a greater level of insurability from FEMA? Or, you know, what's the ramifications? Why is it beneficial to tell FEMA now?
Well, I'm an honest gal. And truly, we have more accurate mapping now. And I think it's fair to use that mapping. And if we're using it internally through our general plan and through what will be, you know, a flood adaptation plan that we're going to be recommending that we pursue and looking for FEMA funding to support the projects that we need to build to protect the community, we want FEMA as our partner in this. I feel pretty strongly about that. There's probably a dozen other really good reasons, but those are my first two.
And getting out early with this will give us first access to FEMA funding potentials for projects, potentially.
There's funding there now. So the sooner we can start asking, and we're getting ready to start asking, the better. I want to remind you that we are not sharing the sea level rise. They don't care about the sea level rise back then. They're not going to see any of these maps that we showed you tonight. They're just going to see a piece of them. They're just going to see the rain and storm surge layer is all they're going to see.
Okay, okay. And then you mentioned two years to get through the FEMA process. Do we have to finish the FEMA process before we can do the EIR for the general plan?
No. Completely separate, parallel but separate.
For clarity, thanks.
Am I good on that planning? You're with me, right? Just checking.
Did everybody figure on that problem? Council member Trips.
Good, thank you for the presentation, all these details. And I think what you showed on all these maps, that the, at the southern edge, the Petaluma Marsh is, almost every single map is completely flooded. Just as a note, that the arrow is not pointing to Schoenberger, it's pointing toward the Grays Marsh of Ellis Creek facility. And Schoenberger is north of there a little bit, just so everyone's aware of that.
Sorry, I'll check the arrows.
Everything. Which is already a mud flat. And so just what you said at the very end, the importance of the Petaluma Marsh and its ecology and how it impacts the flooding here in Petaluma. I think that cannot be underestimated at this point from all the things that I've seen and discussions on the ecology of our marsh. We have, coming up shortly, there is a talk that's going to be done on Zoom that's by San Francisco Astoria Institute. They're going to start a sediment study and focused on our watershed with a couple of recommendations of where they're leading. So that'll be an important thing to watch, as well as a couple others that the Snowman Land Trust and the RCD Resource Conservation District, working with the San Francisco Astoria Institute. There's lots of ideas that have been tossed out and a need to protect Petaluma Marsh. And it's going to be the moving sediment is going to be critical because we are going to need to save it from its ecology because it's also, that's what's saving our flooding, especially during the higher tides. So we just want to make sure that that awareness is brought up, that we really need to work with not only Marin County and Sonoma County both on that particular issue. It's going to be critical in the long term. So just as important, anything we do locally here within the city, building the walls, whatever, doing, helping the counties do that is going to be just as critical. So I just bring that forward from all the things that I'm hearing from the watershed folks and the water scientists out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to move quickly to our public who have been so patient to be here at this time of night. And as we move to the public comment on this item, I would appreciate a card either before we get a chance to speak or after we get a chance to speak here. But let's see. I'd have to ask our clerk, thank you, if we have received any from the public this evening. And I believe we've received one comment. And so we have in-house right now, one. And we will, we will wait patiently for people to enter their names in this. And as this is.
You may?
Yes.
Excuse me. There's something that I should have mentioned earlier. And I, it wasn't in our prepared remarks, but there is a new initiative at the county that we're participating and partnering with the county and all the jurisdictions in the county in a countywide flood risk management partnership. And we're starting to do mutual planning, sharing our information, working together toward a regional flood management program. And it's a solid group from all of our jurisdictions in the county. And I'm participating along with some other staff members. Pam Taff has been participating. And our Water Resources and Conservation Manager will be participating. Really excited about it. I think it's going to be very impactful. And they're just information gathering and surveying right now, but we're in the thick of it and in it for the long haul to work with this team.
Very good, okay. So tonight we have Dwayne Ballinger to be followed by David Keller. And in this is a workshop, if you feel in need to answer a particular question, feel free to jump in on the workshop format. Dwayne, you're on.
Okay, Dwayne here. Um, yes, thank you very much, all of you, for paying attention to this very important subject. What I, what I would say first of all is that if they told you that your probability of getting in an auto accident, uh, was one half of 1%, uh, you would still put your child or grandchild, in most cases here, in a, in a, in a child seat in the back in the middle of the car. That even if they told you it was one hundredth of 1%, um, that you would still do that. And I, I point that out simply as that, uh, extreme caution is possibly a, a, a good idea. As to sea level rise, I, I would point out that the, um, temperature of ice, uh, the, the surface of ice, uh, Greenland, you get storms and put ice on for the last thousands of years. Uh, the difference of opinion as to whether it's been 400, uh, million or whether it's just been relatively recent that the current, uh, glaciers are there. But every year you get a little bit of increase and you get this mile high of ice. And you get to see, um, when the, it heats up, the earth heats up and it melts away, a little bit of the surface goes away. And my question is this, is what is the, the internal temperature of Greenland in the, in the ice? And I don't see any records at all talking about the internal temperature as to whether it has been, as a, as a glacier has been heating up to where it used to be minus whatever, 100 degrees, and now it's minus 20. And is it going to suddenly reach a point where the whole thing melts very quickly? And I don't see any research on this. And I've noticed the federal government, it comes to financing research, uh, doesn't want to finance research that adversely affects their, uh, financial interest. If they prevent, uh, the health department from researching, uh, gun violence against children. They prevent the IRS from investigating, uh, to the very rich. And they, uh, prevent, um, they, they just, there's no money available. They tell the, uh, we could go on on that. Um, I don't trust, I don't trust the research. And I'd like to see, um, see better research knowing what, especially a reference to the internal temperature of Antarctica and Greenland. Uh, I would like to point out about FEMA insurance. Oh, before I say that, I should point out that the maps up here that show the, your, your sewage disposal plant of being partially underwater, I was standing here at this microphone, I don't know, 10, 20, 15 years ago, saying that it should be built 10 feet above sea, uh, the current sea level. And here you're showing me maps that show that it, that it's, part of it's, a third of it is underwater.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much for the comments. Uh, that's the three minutes for the evening. And, um, I'm assuming that the, um, internal temperature of Greenland might be beyond the scope of this?
I, I can't speak to it tonight.
Okay. Uh, and David Keller to be followed by Rick Savell.
Okay. Uh, David Keller, Petaluma River Council. First, I want to thank city staff, uh, West and Sherwood for the draft, um, revisions to the flood management planning and the mapping. Uh, I think that's been a great improvement over what we've had, particularly regarding sea level rise and the tides. Um, Petaluma, as you know, has a long history of flooding and flood management, of which we've had serious failures going back over a century. Uh, in 1895, California Public Works said, well, to reduce the flooding, uh, you should straighten the river and that will improve navigation. Uh, skipping ahead to 1995 and our flood project, uh, that's really a 40-year fix. The city elected a 40-year, a two and a half percent flood, uh, event fix. Uh, and they predicted that a lot of that would be, uh, over, uh, unprotected by the end of the lifespan of that project, 40 years. Uh, the, after the Mississippi floods in 1993, the Corps of Engineers issued a Galloway Report, which had three core, shall we say, recommendations. One, don't build in the flood plain. Two, uh, evacuate the flood plains, uh, from anything that does not need to be in the flood plain, that is not river dependent or water dependent. And three, protect what must remain. Uh, and that goes to your policy questions, Brian, about what do you do with all this information? Over a 30-year mortgage, what does a 1% storm mean? It means that over a 30-year mortgage, a home in a 1% flood plain has a 26% chance of flooding. Or if you like to play poker, uh, getting three cards of the same, fear of a kind, is 2% chance. So we're not talking some astronomically small event. Regarding the modeling, uh, that we have, uh, what's missing for me at this point is the predictive modeling. And I had a great conversation, um, with one of your consultants, uh, a couple of days ago. What's missing to me is a predictive on rainfall events, on precipitation events, particularly pluvial, which is ponding and street flow and sheet flow and fluvial, which is overbank flow. Um, and what I've seen, uh, as they're being developed is the, uh, lack of, uh, or discrepancies between what's being proposed and, uh, the flood factor models. Uh, the council is ultimately responsible for the decisions you make. You need to be clear about who benefits, who pays, and who gets the risks. And those are public policy decisions, not engineering decisions. And I'd appreciate if you pay.
Thank you very much. You reached the three minute. And, uh, now Rick Savell. And then I have a card from Tammy McNulty about the ceasefire. And that's not on this moment, so there won't be a comment tonight. And so, um, back to Rick Savell.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Rick Savell, Pangrove. I'm here as a member of the public tonight, but for background, I have 39 years as a public policy advocate. And during that period of time, I was Chair of Zone 2A. From 2000 to 2008, most recently, a public member of Marin LAFCO, but I'm retired now. I was intimately involved in a lawsuit with the city of Roanoke Park around 1999, 2000. I want to spike, speak to the council about what I call the top of the bathtub. And as if I may, through the chair, Mr. Councilmember Healy, I think there's a really important need for the city to expand its planning area boundary to north of Railroad Avenue to, to include Southern Roanoke Park. That's the top of the Petaluma headwaters and drain into the watershed. Part of our settlement agreement with Roanoke Park, they had attempted to bifurcate that and annex that 190 acres, which would have been paved over and that water would end up in the auto mall. There's been three or four technical changes there. One is firm that we know for sure. The other is in motion. And I'm very concerned about the modeling, that those incremental changes that have yet to be memorialized and documented are taken into consideration. Number one. Number two, more particularly, if we look again from the top of the, the bathtub further down, we know about Copeland Creek, and that's a whole nother topic. And that's, we've researched that a lot, have a lot of information. But more, but the third part, though, that's a real concern, is the confluence of Willowbrook and Lehigh at Redwood Highway over crossing in the east side. We have the data and the analysis from the Redwood Business Park, uh, analysis that was done several days after the 1999 El Nino. The water that's conveyed there, once it converges over to the west side, is limited to about 20, 2,800 cubic feet per second. That leaves 600 to 800 feet there that overbank to Redwood Drive. It hits McDowell. It goes all the way down McDowell to Corona. We've, we're trying to look at ways that that might be transferred to the west side. And Aaron, I'll wrap up with this. Aaron Fulton from the Water Agency did a wonderful technical memo that addresses that once the city has its new model done, the steps taken. He's the modeler, our primary principal engineer modeling at the Water Agency for Zone 2A. He's outlined perfectly all the steps to take that's ready to go. But I wish you luck with that because as I said to former Mayor Barrett, it looks to me that it has all the characteristics that the city may get stuck with that overbanking condition in perpetuity. It may not be able to be transferred. So I'm going to wind up with that and save you two seconds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, would you guys care to comment on, uh, on the comments made right there regarding whether all the water that needs to be considered in the basin is in the basin? And more nuanced to what was just mentioned?
Yeah, all, all rainfall that falls on the basin is included in the model and it has to work its way through. The rainfall estimates, though, is based on the current understanding of the current rain events. To agree with the speaker, it, it does not consider that rainfall is expected in most estimates to get worse in the future, deeper storms, right, greater storms. There wasn't enough guidance and reliable data to do that this round. We're expecting, hopefully even within a year, that there will be a, uh, a sufficient guidance that we can say, how much more intense is the rain in the mid-century? How much more intense is it at the end of the century? And, uh, use that to update the maps. And, and absolutely, as we go into phases of planning flood protection, that flood protection projects, that's absolutely the time that you want to see, okay, what do we need to design to start working on flood risk now? But then what are the designs that we don't have to build yet? But we want to build them, figure out the plan for the land entitlement, for the funding, and be ready to build them in the future. Because a lot of these, we don't have to build all the protection against these long-term sea level rise and, and climate change flooding. We don't have to build it now, but we do want to start planning it now.
So the Redwood Park east side to west side is part of a later engineering effort rather than part of our, an overall analysis right now? It's a drill, drill down element?
That phenomenon of overbank is, we're seeing that in the model.
Yeah, we, we, we can watch that. What we didn't show you tonight is a live version of the model where we can run it and, and we can actually watch the water moving and where it goes and what the depths and velocities are. And it, and, uh, and we have, so we have witnessed this. We have seen this exact condition that Rick described. We're well aware of it. It's been going on for a long time. So we know about it anecdotally, but we see it in the model clear, clear as can be. So we are aware of the condition.
So much like the, um, their Culver Bridge, uh, you know, human intervention things, this crossing the freeway with water is, is, is a, um, later thing for infrastructure?
Yeah. Uh, so the, the idea here is that with, with a planning effort and with, um, an adaptation plan, we can start identifying these projects, start prioritizing them, which ones are going to have the most impact. We'll be looking through an equity lens as well to make sure that we're taking into account everything we can as these get prioritized. We'll be bringing that back, no doubt, to council for discussion and review as well. But yeah, the idea is that we're going to be setting this up to define projects, prioritize projects, and find projects.
Definitely an exciting, uh, uh, future. And the Copeland overflow phenomena, is that incorporated in the modeling we're doing?
Well, it's seen in the model. Um, the areas that Rick is talking about north of us, where there's some upcoming projects, uh, we have to rely on Sonoma County's model, right? And their boundary condition, which now talks to our model because they're both using the same modeling, uh, software. And, uh, so we need, it, it's a communication with the county to make sure that they're updating and that we get their updates.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Can I ask you to come to the microphone and?
It's unusual geographically because Lehigh Road, south of Lehigh Road is the, uh, second district in Petaluma Watershed. North of there is the first district and, you know, Copeland Creek, it spills over from the first to the second district between two watersheds. But Supervisor Goran's been wonderful in the first district in trying to work with us and Supervisor Rabbit. Because they understand it's a regional problem. We can't be myopic about looking at that. And I hope there's greater, I look forward to greater communication about that. So.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that's the last, uh, card speaker we have on, uh, the topic tonight. So I'm going to close public comment, uh, for the evening. And I will, um, bring it back to council. Any concluding, uh, commentary in? And, uh, Kater Thompson?
A quick, um, the reason I like fine balance is because I always talked about the upper reach was the top of the bathtub and the basin was the plug. And so I appreciated you talking about bathtubs all night. It was a great project.
You really have brought, uh, great content and, and the workshop like this is just, uh, you know, fabulous for council to understand. Thank you very much. And with that, we, uh, close the, uh, workshop and the item and also the council meeting adjourned for the evening. Happy New Year's, everyone. Thank you.